May 26th, Board of Supervisors meeting. And at this particular time, I'd like for us to have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We may be seated. And at this particular time, I'd like for us to have a moment of silence for one of our past Board of Supervisor members. F.W. Butch was his nickname, Jenkins Jr., who passed away on May 4th of this year. Butch served on the Board of Supervisors from January 1, 1994 through December 31, 2017. He was the second longest-serving Board Member in Lancaster County's history for 24 years of service. So at this time, let us have a moment of silence. Amen. All right. So at this particular time, we have a meeting here between the two Boards, the Board of Supervisors and the Lancaster County Broadband Authority.
I'm not going to go there. I will not go there.
All right. Mr. Gill will open us up.
I'll just give a brief overview.
I have to call a meeting.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Today, sir, 27th call meeting of the Lancaster Broadband Authority two board.
Well, Mr. Gill, let me do this. Since Mr. Lee asked for the meeting.
Is your mic on?
You hear me?
Oh, I hear you.
Hear me now? Let me pull it closer. Since Mr. Lee asked for this meeting to be held, you open it up, sir.
Well, I had spoken with Mr. Gill and Mr. Palin about broadband and the direction that some of us assumed that we were heading. And then I was watching the emails and reading the emails going back and forth. And I said, we need to have a face-to-face so everybody can get on the same page with what we expect and what the broadband authority, what they are pursuing and how we're going to be doing it. We had, in our minds, at least I'll back up, in my mind, I knew what I expected the broadband authority to be pursuing because my number-one goal was fiber to every home in the county and affordable at that and in a timely manner and something that wouldn't cost the taxpayer over and over and over and over again. So with that, you know, I've been reading, I read the memo that was put out from the authority and I had a couple of questions on that and hopefully that'll be answered tonight, too. But that was the reason why. It's just a lot of questions just kept coming up and sometimes you need to talk. Sometimes you need to talk face-to-face and get things squared away.
I'm just curious, excuse me, are the others in? I know Shari and...
Yes, they are.
Are you guys in? I have seen Michelle.
And Nicholas?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Can you put it on the big screen, Glenn?
Sorry.
That's all right. Dr. Westbrook, you had some questions, comments, statements?
I do. I have some real heartburn, actually, because I share what I believe I heard Mr. Lee say that on March 25th, you, Mr. Palin, as a chairman, unequivocally said, "We want fiber, not wireless." And then it took months before we got a statement from the broadband authority. That was an 18-page memo that contained the vision and the plan. But in that memo, you talk about wireless, you talk about accepting the FCC's minimum of 25.3 as being, you don't say "good enough," but that's what you can read between the lines, that's good enough. Everybody realizes that, in many cases, something is better than nothing. But you don't start off with the minimum, in my opinion. And we have the example of the Eastern Shore and what they did. Now, granted, they got money from NOAA and NASA and I don't know what else. So they had a starting fund. But we also know that they've been successful and that they're drawing approximately $1 million a year if that's profit or what. But they're making money for their people and they're offering superior service. And what this memo tells me is that the broadband authority, as a group, I don't know about the individuals, but as a group, is willing to accept whatever an ISP is going to give us through these different programs. You accepted VADI when ABB, it's my understanding, that every conversation was about fiber. And then at the last minute, just before the deadline for the VADI application, they said, oh, we can't do that. It's half copper and half fiber. And you guys acquiesced to that. So that means that half of those homes that we're going to be paying for are going to get limited, perhaps limited service, more limited than they might prefer. So that's heartburn of mine. I'd like to ask Mr. Pasqualeetti, if I could, how much money was there involved in the NOAA and NASA grants that was given to the Eastern Shore?
Well, it was a NASA appropriation, nothing to do with NOAA. And total between NASA, DHCD, and the EDA, it was like $11 million.
Okay.
But don't forget, that was solely, that was nothing to do with residential. It was all for economic development and to get to the wild space in Chigatig area, Wilds Island, down to the Virginia Beach side of the Bay Bridge Tunnel. So we were not allowed to build anywhere past schools or with those grant funds or, you know, to go past neighborhoods or homes.
Okay. But it gave you the seed money to start doing things. And then, as I understand it, the issue changed when, and I couldn't have this wrong, but the Eastern Shore decided to be an ISP instead of just providing the middle mile to ISPs. Is that correct?
By default. So the broadband authority was started on the Eastern Shore. Contracts were let to build the fiber across the Bay Bridge Tunnel. And there was no organization. They didn't know what they were going to do. They were looking at the cooperative model. They already have the authority established. They were also looking at someone else to operate it. So there was an offer from an operator in the Commonwealth, I think it was going to charge $250,000 plus or minus a year to operate the network with no expansion, just really to kind of go through the, you know, through the Eastern Shore. So by default, the authority was set up, and that's when I came down to help start that organization up and operate it and continue to design the rest of the network and build it.
Whoa.
But there was no service providers there. And I think that's critical. It was a complete greenfield. Verizon, Verizon's DSL was embargoed, so somebody wanted service for DSL service, they could not get service because they were at capacity and they were going to add capacity. Charter, at the time, had no capacity and wasn't going to build that. They had some, you know, networks in certain areas and more populated areas, but the rest of them, they didn't. So the Eastern Shore at the time, when we started building, was a complete greenfield.
Did you have, was it your input for the business plan that came up with the estimates of cost, pages 11 and 12 on the memo?
Yes.
Does a lot of that have to do with the fact that we would have to bury our own fiber, well, buy our own fiber, bury it or hang it on poles after paying a fee to the electric company?
Yes.
Okay. Is it possible?
There's a combination. So you're going to get to pay pole attachment fees and make-ready to get onto those poles. And then you'll also have to, if you go into the B dot right-of-way, then you have to bury it, then you have to, and you incur the cost of burying it. So it's a combination of both.
Because APB and Dominion and NNEC have this arrangement through the state code, is it possible that if the broadband authority was an ISP, that it could also share in that cable on the poles? And the make-ready fee, as I understand it, is what you have to pay them to be able to put your own fiber on the pole. But wouldn't we save money if we could do that? If APB does not live up to what they have promised us, if we give them a fair start at that and they don't live up to that, could we petition the SCC that our broadband authority can latch onto that cable, that fiber, excuse me, and at a cheaper price than we would have to do?
I think the pilot, the way it's written now before the SCC, it prohibits government authorities from doing that.
But we would be an ISP.
We're still government authority.
That is changing next year.
Operating as an ISP.
Just so you know, they're changing. Now, I don't know if it's been approved yet by the commission, but that's supposed to change for next year, that now municipalities that have an authority can now attach on. So it's a change, but that, and again, I don't know if it's proposed or has gone through. So we will know by this time next year if that's a possibility. But currently, I don't believe that's a possibility.
Okay. But it has been proposed and it is possible in the future. You know, it just seems to me that we have to trust that APB is going to do what they say as far as fiber goes. We have to trust them until they don't do that. And reading through this 18-page thing, what does it say? It says that you're going to, you're going to hold meetings. Let's see if I can find it. You're going to hold meetings, you're going to have reports, you're going to, basically, here you go, on page three, goals with realistic completion dates. VADI is an 18-month project. Atlantic Broadband is developing the project management plan. And LCBA will require reports and meetings to discuss the progress and will be visiting sites once construction begins to verify the identified work. So another piece of heartburn for me is what are the consequences? What are the markers that say, when we come to do this inspection, this is what we expect to see? And if they don't do that, what are the consequences? You can have all the reports in the world, you can do any kind of inspection you want, but if it's just meaningless bureaucratic stuff, there's that. So my main heartburn is that you totally ignored what we told you. We told you we want fiber to the home, the capability. We're not going to require anybody to do it, but we want fiber to the premises, business and residential. Now, that isn't going to happen overnight, but that's what we want. And yet you have come up with this 18-page report and saying that we've got wireless capability and these people can, you even, I didn't highlight everything, but, let me see if I can find it. Basically, they have the, oh, every business in Lancaster County, this is your vision, every business in Lancaster County has affordable access to a service-oriented broadband infrastructure with as much bandwidth as needed to successfully compete with business located anywhere in the global economy. Who gets to decide that? You reached an agreement, the VADI agreement, with multiple counties and ABB. And basically, those, half of those homes that are going to get copper, what's their limit of expansion? Because they're going to have one. Copper has a limit of what it can do. So if someone wants a higher level of service, they're not going to get it. And yet you think it's good enough. Now, I've talked way too much. I think I've said everything, for the most part, that I wanted to say, but I'm very disappointed that this was your official response to multiple times that I have asked you personally for a vision statement, a mission statement, and how you plan to do it. So yes, to me, this is a rationale to give you the political will to ignore what we said.
A couple of things. First of all, there are points in here that we say we will at least meet what we require, 25.3, that's FCC, blah, blah, blah.
But it's not what we said, Cassie.
I was quiet.
Yes, you accepted 25.3, which is the minimum.
We accept that as the minimum. There's points in here that talk about up to 1 gigabyte. There will be things available for what people can afford, what they want. We did not wholeheartedly accept that all you're going to get is 25.3. There's no place in here that says, everybody has to be happy. All you're going to get is 25.3. Second, wireless, that's the CARES Act. This county will not have fiber to the premises in six weeks. This takes time, as we told you, 18 months for this one, basically, two and a half years, 2024. The CARES Act, that wireless is temporary as these things build. There's nothing in here that says, we're going to, we want wireless, we want fiber. That is temporary. If somebody wants to keep it, if BTS builds a wireless system, somebody has, they want to keep it, that's the individual's choice. We're not telling them, you have to go to fiber. They want to choose it, I'm not going to make them do it. Nobody here can make them choose something that you want that they don't want. So we have not said in here, be happy, 25.3 is all you're going to get. We have been busy. We have been at this over three years. We didn't know what we didn't know. We learned a lot. Russ was a first opportunity to really go.
I've been with you every day, except for a brief period, every day. I'm the person that's responsible for calling this board's attention to the fact that we need broadband. I mean, they knew it, but we set the wheels in motion. So I know exactly how long it's been since you started, and I know the process that you've done, and I'm sorry.
But if you walk away from us for five or six months, don't...
And why did I do that? Because you...
Let's not argue. Let's talk the points. Let's talk the points.
But the point is, this memo was not written just to some flight of fancy. We believe that we're going to get fiber to the premises for this county. It takes time to get it. We've worked hard. We've spent hours looking at funds, grants, et cetera, presentations. We've kept you informed as much as we could. A few months until we knew about Russ, we were sort of caught with, we don't know. Then VADI came along, we started working that, still waiting. APB came along, working that, still waiting. And then we know the consequences of Russ, we didn't get it. Now we look at NTIA may be a possibility. We're looking at it. But we have not acquiesced. That's your opinion. I have gotten calls from people who say, no, thank you, at least we see something working. And I appreciate that from them. But we have not acquiesced. We, we're unpaid, and yet we put in hours to respond to grant requests. I mean, Gary's put in, I don't know how many hours with GIS mapping, et cetera. Every member of the authority, present and past, unpaid, worked. We did Russ, 314-page application. We didn't do that in three days. So we didn't acquiesce. We're doing the best we can. You can say we acquiesced. I'm not going to argue with you. I say we didn't. And if somebody else on the authority wants to comment on it, feel free.
But the other thing we said was, we wanted to own the system because we wanted to follow the Eastern Shore of Virginia broadband authority's example and own the system so that we get a return on the investment that we would make. And everything you've done so far, I'm going to, and this will be the last I'm going to talk, but everything you've talked about so far is giving the reins to someone else. And you have a history with ABB that has, they have not done what they were supposed to do because we had no leverage to make them do what they were supposed to do. And now you're going to trust ABB. I've read through the minutes, you're one of the ones who said it, that they haven't done what they, I'll find it for you, but it won't make much difference to you. But you can't trust, well, they've shown that they couldn't be trusted in the past. And now we're going to trust them that they're going to live up to everything with this VADI proposal.
Can I just make a comment? Because what we're trying, first of all, the tide has changed from when the Eastern Shore started. If the Eastern Shore of Virginia was in the same position today as Lancaster County is, the probability of them building a network would be very small. Because there, we, there was very little, really only DSL was available and maybe U Skylight. So I don't think, and I don't think we, we certainly, as a group, don't like the 25.3. We realize that that's, you know, the FCC minimum. What we're trying to do is balance, get in service quickly to everyone, so everyone is, so it's equitable and everybody's included to get service so they could do what they can do immediately, but look at other funding potentials to see how we can now further bolster that. Or, and if you read it in the document, it clearly states that if that doesn't happen, then we're going to, then we'll look to overbuild. But when you look at the financials, with the ARDOF and the VADI, there's no greenfield, everybody's going to have service. Now, they may not like it, but everybody's going to have service. I shouldn't say that. Most of them will like it, but it won't be, maybe some of them might be at the minimum of 25.3. To take rate, the capital expense to build a fiber network in Lancaster County and have a take rate of maybe 20%, it's not, it's not going to, it's not going to hold muster. It's not, you're not going to be able to pay back any, any kind of loans. You won't be able to service that debt. And with APB taking 2,700 homes and giving them, you know, fiber to the home, you're taking probably 30% of the households out of the mix. So that's probably 0% take rate in that area. And now you're going to the rest of the APB areas, which are going to be served. And to think you're going to get a 40% take rate from an incumbent is very high. It's unrealistic. So if they do fail, then we have to take action.
Yeah, I think you have answered... You have answered one of the questions that had been puzzling me. And the Eastern Shore model that we keep talking about doesn't sound like the best model for Lancaster County. I think that's what I'm hearing you say at this time.
It's a timing issue. So if this was, you know, six months ago, maybe a year ago, then it probably would have been a great model. But a lot, lot has changed since, in a year. The amount of funding for broadband on the state and federal level is unprecedented. Even under President Obama's stimulus, there hasn't been this much funding for broadband as there is now. The ARDOF auction takes, once again, I mean, All Points Broadband, you know, won that auction. For $217 a subscriber that the county's going to pay, we're going to have fiber to the home service for 2,700 homes. For the other, for the VADI, where we don't have, where they're currently unserved, that's going to be with, you know, Atlantic Broadband, they're going to get service. Now, I don't think all, once again, we don't have the project plans, but the new service going in where they're expanding, I don't believe is all going to be at a minimum of 25.3. It may be, I mean, that's their minimum, but I think they're going to, where they're building a new network, I don't think they're going to build, you know, old tech, you know, three-generation old technology. But the key point is that everybody, and I say everybody, is going to get some kind of service that's going to meet the FCC minimum guidelines. And as important as it is to exceed those minimum guidelines, I would venture that 90% of the people that for the next, for the near term, the FCC minimum will provide the service they need for their children to do homework at home and to do business from home or do whatever they have to do from home and the most expeditiously. So once again, it's a balancing act. Would you like the best degree network? Yeah, we would. Is it going to cost a lot of money, would it take a lot of time? Yes, it would. But what is important, especially during this pandemic, is that everybody gets service as soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
What Mr. Pasqualeetti has said is exactly the thing that I feel, and that is, is that we're not going to get fiber optic to the house, right to the house, every house in the county within anybody's lifetime in here, probably all our children's. It's not going to happen because it's simply, the cost is prohibitive, at least in my mind. I visualize my own situation, coming down 354. We're not even down to, close to where I need to be. Then you go down Slabtown, another mile, then you go down another road, and finally you come into my driveway, and you're talking about putting fiber all the way down there? This is what we have said as a board, we want. And that's the thing that troubled me when I saw that we went ahead and approved funding and a budget for you based on the model, if you will, of the Eastern Shore. And then suddenly, that's not the model we have. And as I've heard Mr. Pasqualeetti talk here, I can see it happening exactly that way. But we have said to the citizens of the county, that's what we want to bring. We have committed in our budget some, close to half a million dollars for you to make something happen. And what you've come back with is, it's not what we, as Dr. Westbrook has said, not what we thought we were going to get. Fine, we can deal with that. But I totally believe the same sort of thing that has been brought up by other board members here, that when we go into this public-private thing, we not only lose control, but we lose ownership. And you cannot project revenues if you don't own anything. And that's the problem there. And if you recall, Cassie, that was the one thing that was probably the most important to me, that you become self-staining. You become a true authority, not somebody that is, for all intents and purposes, another fund administrator of the county, taking up a large chunk of the budget by comparison to the rest of them. So I think that this, we have to, we have to just get this affirmation out, number one, that you're not going to be able to get there. It's a goal, and maybe at some point in time. But I just don't see these private entities working with us like that to the point, because it's not going to be in their financial best interest to do it. They're not going to bring fiber optic all the way down to my place at 86 Starview Place. They're simply not going to do it. And they'll only do it if there's a, if there's enough other money thrown into the pot to make it happen. So those are the things that trouble me and why, like I say, I don't, I just don't see this. I'd see us three years down the road having committed a million and a half dollars and not really have gotten that much. I think there's going to be delays is another thing. I don't, you know, they're talking about us being in phase two on the Dominion project. Gary, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's okay. In actuality, with the proposed thing with All Points Broadband slash Dominion, that big project, you will get fiber to the home on the Peninsula Act. So that is going to happen for most of District One and District Two, based on my understanding.
Let me ask you there, because I can show you pieces of paper that conflict in what they say. One says that Northern Neck will be involved in it. And if you go all the way back to the original proposal, which we stepped away from because they were going to make us draw up the Russ grant, and unfortunately, in hindsight, hindsight always being 2020, we probably would have done it if we know what we know now. But in there, Northern Neck was going to be a partner. And most recently, in an email that I've seen, it says Dominion will not go into Northern Neck territory. So which is right? Northern Neck is going to be there or they're not going to be there?
Let me correct that. You're right, Dominion is going to run the fiber to a certain point, probably right up to Dominion Building, you know, that's still Dominion territory. And then what, this is what's interesting. Most of APB's fiber that they're going to put, All Points Broadband fiber, is going to be on that 354 Peninsula. But basically, All Points Broadband is going to go ahead and build out that whole area, okay? Other than the Heritage Point where they already have ABB services, because they're not allowed to go into serve areas, or I think parts of Carrotoman by the Bay also have ABB. So those would be the two exclusions on the 354 Peninsula. But everything else will be covered as fiber. The angst, from my perspective, some people don't like me saying it this way, but the result is, we now have a binopoly. We are setting up a binopoly in our county right now of APB, which is going to be all We, we are setting up a binopoly in our county right now of APB, which is going to be all the unserved areas in the county. So that's going to be predominantly, um, certainly District One, uh, most of District Two, and then Districts Three, Four, and Five would not be, well, there's pieces of it, you, you know, because of the Swiss cheese.
They're already being taken. The Vita Grant is finishing up some stuff there for them, too.
Yeah, but there, there's some Swiss cheese. There's about 200 homes that would be part of the All Points Broadband effort. And then we had roughly 300 homes, which was knocked down to 193, which, for the actual VATTI proposal, which we had to go through with. So that's, that's where it stands. So really, the question that I would expect, uh, you know, particularly Bill, um, and, Jason and Bob to ask, hey, wait a minute, I'm going to have APB. I already have, at my house, I have ABB, and I get a pinwheel of death when I try and download a movie or, or a variety of things. We know where some of these poor service areas are, and that's what we would attack with the, this new grant and have, we'd have to, um, it probably makes the most sense to go back to All Points Broadband. And would you take this going into a served area to serve these poor serviced ABB areas with the idea to eventually grow out and get all those areas? It would be, have to be a, a focused grant in those areas saying, we know these areas are bad, we know Round Tides Inn, it's in general just very old plant, okay? And then we also know there's pieces of Kilmarnic, and, and I think Bill would probably point those out. But that's how you would get, uh, fiber to the home on those. But go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, so APB is going to lay fiber to the home.
Right.
Back to Dr. Westbrook's point, at any place along the line where they're getting their service via this cable, is it going to be copper instead of, they're going to have to tie into somebody, are they not?
That would be all fiber for All Points Broadband. ABB, you're absolutely right, they will have copper in their system until-
So they're, they're not, APB is not going to be tying into any overhead lines, so why do we have to involve the power companies at all?
Well, that, that, that's what, you have to include the power companies because, quite frankly, Dominion is running the middle mile. In other words, you got to get to a data station somewhere.
But again, just so I'm clear, is that middle mile copper or fiber?
Fiber, fiber. Dominion has committed to putting fiber in, well, if you look at, you can go to All Points Broadband map now, it'll show you what their Phase One and Phase Two counties. Right now, they're Phase Two counties, they have Middlesex, King William, us, Loudoun, and, um, someone help me, there, there's a couple other counties, and they're talking to Hanover, which is Ashland area, so you're getting closer into Richmond. Those are the, the potential for this next phase that's going to go to the FCC. Probably they'll write the report and, uh, proposal somewhere around August, if last year's timing was right, and we'll hear sometime from January to March on that. And that's the key point, when we hear that, this goes exactly to your point, Bob, are, is APB going to flake out? Is there going to be problems at the commission from, uh, someone complaining that served or whatever? Then we'll know. And it, one, the potential area I'm concerned with is the, uh, five-mile tower area. What is going, what is the decision on that? And if that becomes not eligible for this program, then we, there's enough homes, greenfield homes in there, to make a business case that we would build out from here a, as a, um, LCBA, okay? But until you have a sizable greenfield, in other words, we could have refused the VATTI grant and tried to build a business model off of those, uh, 193 homes, okay? But it's too small of a number. And then it means you're going to have to capture, uh, I, I think Nicholas said 30% was a high end. I, I don't really know on a brownfield, particularly if people are discussing with the service, what you can expect as, you know, people contributing in, but you'd have to have something. And, and it's going to, based on our numbers, if we were to do all of Region Three, it's going to be about a four and a half million dollar project. So it, it gives you the, the scope of, the largest scope, but I don't think we'd be doing all of that.
If I may, Mr. Haylen, just one more thing. Talk now about the operating budget that was approved based on our understanding that we were going to follow the eastern shore plan, if you will, or it was going to be a public ISP. Does that budget need modifying right now, I, downward?
I don't think so.
I, I think there are things in there that we-
I'd like to ask Cass, Cassie the question.
I'd have to look at each, we'd have to look at each thing. It wouldn't be modified by like $200,000 or anything, because, um, as we mentioned at that budget review, 25th, that, um, we have an executive director, we may have to get another position on there, um, over the next year, and he gave us information about who we need, what kind of a person we'd need. So the most, then everything else is legal fees, travel, et cetera. We can shave things, but this, the big budget, the big part, I don't see not shaving it half or anything.
Just, just so you know, I'm going to propose to the board, I'm not going to oppose what's in the budget, because it's a plan, and it's a fast-moving plan, and what you're telling me is at this point in time, you don't know that you can make an appreciable, appreciable dent in your budget request. But, you know, and I respect the right of the authority to make decisions about what they're going to do and move forward, but I hope that you also respect that you're different to a lot of other authorities in that you're taking money from the public treasury. That's our responsibility to make sure that it's spent wisely and that we don't take and start down the path into a rabbit hole whereby we spent a lot of money and not gotten much for it. And it comes back to, again, you constantly being aware that you, you have committed to being self-sustaining at some point in time and have been paying back these monies. It's 500,000 a year right now in operating costs plus the matching funds. And my concern still, Gary's put my mind at rest a little bit about what we're going to get up in District One, but my concern still is the amount of money that is coming to you to do what it is that you say you're going to do and whether or not we'll ever get it back in any appreciable degree. And to me, that's very, very important if you're going to be called a fund authority. Otherwise, you might as well be a fund administrator under the board, and we give you the direction.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
No, it does, I mean.
Um, what, and, and I think you make a good point, Jack. I think one of the real keys here is the offer that we had from APB, which we, we were not expecting such an offer, okay? And, and the fact that that takes, and again, it's thinking about the county economically. And I, I, I was 100% us owning it and trying to figure out how to make this go. But you, you put up, we're talking big dollars, and I, I, I'm, I'm, I know you understand that. And you're right, what this now means, any budgetary item or matching is real money as opposed to paying ourselves back eventually from the, the project. You're, you're absolutely correct on that, okay? The thought is, and we're trying to figure out, how do we make money? You know, to, to essentially pay back the, the county on a, on a long-term basis. It's not going to be fast, but we, some things we're thinking potentially is a tower. You know, one of the problems in our county is horrible cellular service, and I don't have to tell you, 354 is horrible when you go out. We have areas which are blind. Now, again, it's not going to be a huge moneymaker, but you know, you could be in the range of 50 to 75,000 a year in rental space on there to the teletones. Again, that's one potential way, and one way we can hopefully go ahead and have, start paying back some of the money that, the salaries, et cetera.
Again, Gary, hopefully it's not a word that I'm comfortable with.
Yeah.
There's a commitment made, as far as I'm concerned.
Right.
And I just don't see this plan, uh, either, the, the, I don't see going indefinitely down the road and spending $500,000 a year out of the county funds under this concept.
And I think we agree with that.
Maybe for a year or so.
Yeah.
I, I agree with, with, with Mr. Lawson saying, because that, that part really bothers me that, uh, you know, we four or five years into this thing, we spilled, you know, with this $500,000, and that, that's, uh, that, that bothers me. And the other thing, I wanted to have, you know, a sense of confidence that we are moving in the direction of fiber to the home, that's first thing, and we doing it the fastest way we can. Now, I've, I've heard, you know, the pros and cons about the authority being, you know, in charge and being his own ISP and, and that, with all the changes that, that's happened, that might not be the best thing. But that is what we started out with. That's where our mindset was, you know, when we, we voted on the budget and everything like that. And I know things change, so we have to be sure that the authority, we have to have the confidence, and I said we, the board has to have the confidence that the authority is going to make the best decision for the citizens of the, of the county, that they're going to get the most for the dollar that they spend, and that somewhere along the line, we're going to be getting a return on that investment, somewhere, you know, whether it's three years or four years, but we're going to know we're going to get some kind of return.
Yes, sir. Phil, I agree with you, the investment, and I think we should take all the potential, what this investment means, okay? Bringing fiber to, to the premise, at least for all the unserved areas and hopefully improved ABB signal, and again, that's on the wish list, and they theoretically it should be done, but I don't, it, it's in the future and we'll have to see. And I understand everybody's point here, we've been soured on ABB promises, okay? But we should be looking also at what's this going to do for businesses, okay? Once you have satisfactory, um, one way to also look at this, if you have superior service out in the West, does that finally get us to develop more in the West versus the townships? Unfortunately, the three townships we have are pretty much dominated by all, I'm sorry, Atlantic Broadband. I, I gotta get used to saying things differently. So that's the, that's the crux of, of the question, and the crux is, how do we get in served areas? Right now, there's a law preventing All Points Broadband to build out into these served areas because Dominion does, because of this pilot program, Dominion is not allowed to go ahead and knock someone who's already providing service, acceptable FCC service, to go into those areas and put them out of business. So the law has to change before APB can do that. We do believe on the long game, that will be, happen, because it makes no sense for someone just to come down here for a few homes, okay, economically. So you got to believe their endgame is that. The question is, is it five years down the road or 10 years down the road? We would like it sooner, I, I assume.
Yeah, most sooner.
Yeah, I know, go ahead, Kevin.
I come from a, can y'all hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Come from a very simple point of view. You're going to get 267 miles of fiber for what, right at $1 million? There's no way you'd fire up and run 50 miles of fiber for that same price. That's the reality of it. So.
Yeah, and the trade-off is ownership. That's, that's really what we're saying. Instead of spending the money, which we estimated at roughly $30 million after, after the day, versus spending one, one and a half million dollars, but they own it. And, and I understand the angst that everybody has, because we've been going along, investing as we can. We, you know, the authority also has tried to get its own money, you know, we've been successful on some grants, um, which also have helped move it forward. We're disappointed, quite frankly. We would love to go forward and build it, but it, it's, the economics just don't make sense.
Even this new one we were talking about, the NTIA, which just came out last week and we're looking at it, um, has good points to it. There's no matching required. They're going to have $288 billion. You can go for a grant between 5 million and 30 million, maybe extend past that if you have to explain why, but you don't have to match it. So the county, we wouldn't, if we found something and we put in it with $6 million, you don't have to do a match. However, what they do say in here, two points. One, if you put in a 10, at least a 10% match, you are definitely high on their list of priority to receive a grant. The second thing, they said if the entity, uh, the local, the authority, if we owned it, the county owned it and run, um, wants to run it, owns it now and runs it, you are encouraged to get an ISP. They put it in. So this has not gotten to the point where they're looking at municipalities owning these. For whatever reason, whoever's making those decisions, those things are out there. So we could go for it as an ISP if we wanted to, but they're not encouraging anybody to do that. And if that's the way of the future, maybe the immediate future, I mean, it sort of locks us in, because remember for Russ, you putting up 8.3 million, and we'll get this county done with these funds coming in, you know, we're not, not paying as much, approximately a million, a million five, as opposed to 8.3. I mean, that's a big saving, and you're getting the county done. I mean, it, it could change by a few hundred thousand, but there's no way it's going to be $8 million to do this county for fiber. And it's in here that we're going for fiber, it's in here that 25-3 is the minimum, but we're not stopping at the minimum. It's about three places in here, and especially in the business plan that Nicholas wrote, it's in there. We want best in breed. So if anybody wants one gig, it's going to have, hopefully have that capability, will have, not hopefully, have that capability. We're asking right now APB, and they're talking about giving good, good capability in, um, the system they're going to put in.
So you're asking APB that, and they're-
And Nicholas is the one talking to them, and if I am right, Nicholas, in the conversations you've had, but he's having all this about things they need to do to come to the table for the next level.
Excuse me. Could the chair recognize, um, a comment by Sri Kaiser?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I think it's really important for everyone to understand, or is it, are you getting feedback? No? Um, that APB has committed and must deliver one gigabit service, which far exceeds the minimum, the broadband standard established by the FCC pursuant to the grant that it was awarded that covers Lancaster County and the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund program. That should give the Board of Supervisors a lot of comfort, because in order to secure that grant, they had to provide information to show that they could technologically deliver and commit to one gigabit service and be subject to strict compliance requirements in doing so. In addition, APB has partnered, entered into an agreement with Dominion Energy of Virginia that has an indefeasable rate of use for 20 years to lease capacity on the middle mile that Dominion is deploying at the expense of ratepayers pursuant to a pilot program that the state of Virginia is managing through the State Corporation Commission. This is an opportunity like no other opportunity that has existed before. And the majority of Lancaster County, 2,700 unserved homes as a result, will receive one gigabit capacity capability, which the LCBA, under any, if, if we had unlimited funds, would not be able to deliver as an ISP in the speed timeframe that APB will be required to deliver this service and be monitored very closely and be required to meet compliance guidelines, not just by the Federal Communications Commission, but also by the State Corporation Commission. This is a fabulous opportunity for Lancaster County, and it would have been foolish to ignore it. And that is the reason that, that what you're seeing may be different than what you originally planned or what you thought would be the most lucrative arrangement for the county. These opportunities didn't exist before. Secondly, the VATTI grant provides an opportunity to serve an area that currently wasn't covered. And AB, Atlantic Broadband partnering with the counties under the VATTI grant is also subject to state compliance regulation- subject to state compliance regulation requirements, and as a cable provider is subject to requirements by the Federal Communications Commission and by Lancaster County itself. The other thing that happens is that the reason that the report refers to the fixed wireless coming into the county is more for explaining the level of competition that is coming to this county for the very first time. Starlink is going to be a serious competitor. The LCBA is not considering the fixed wireless solutions, except to the extent that it was signed a contract that Lancaster County entered into with a fixed wireless provider for a very small number of unserved individuals in a very small geographic territory. It may be that those particular individuals should be served by APB. I don't know. LCBA is still looking at that, but I think it's really important for the board to understand that the LCBA did not lightly abandon what the Board of Supervisors thought the direction was. It looked at all the opportunities existing in the county at this time, as well as applying for a variety of grants, one of which it did not receive, the reconnect that would have required Lancaster County to make an $8 million commitment, but it doesn't need to make now, and two, the VADI, which it was awarded. And I believe before my joining the board on January 28th, there may have been another grant that the LCBA was a beneficiary of for a smaller amount, like 40,000 or something. But it's really important to understand, the county is going to get one gigabit service that has been committed and will be heavily regulated to ensure that it happens, as well as overseen by the LCA to assure it's achieved. And if it's not, what the plan says, is that we are committed to doing what is necessary to ensure that this county has the type of broadband that's necessary for the future to bring businesses into the area, to ensure the citizens of the community can have telehealth and education and entertainment in their homes. So if that's not clear from our report, we apologize. But that was the intent of the four corners of that 18-page document, was to ensure that you understood the direction that the LCBA is headed based upon the current circumstances of the marketplace.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a statement on the vision statement and your mission statement. I would like to see fiber worked in there some kind of way, to make that clear to any future people that, yeah, I'd like to see that worked in, all right? Dr. Silverman, I'd like it for you to further comment on what you said, if things doesn't come through for the tower in the five-mile radius, what you were thinking about, how to handle that.
Well, quite frankly, the tower has always been considered as an interim solution, okay? The APB group or the, the all-points broadband will cover that whole area, okay? The idea was that they're estimating right now completion of the all-points broadband eight, 2024, so a little over three years from now, okay? What do you do for three years? We're hoping that this fills a need, okay, to go ahead and allow people to have a serviceable internet. It's not going to be as good as what all-points broadband will come. The, and right now, quite frankly, BTS has had a hard time getting up and running, which is the contractor we did based on a bid. But I'm, my understanding now, they have five people up and running and it's working, but as I have told many people, my confidence in fixed wireless is not there, and they are running into problems with homes, which are many of the homes here are in deadwoods. You know, you're surrounded, it's not just three trees in the front yard. I mean, we're talking, you're packed in, maybe a little bit lower or higher, depend, you know, it's not that we have high peaks or low, but we have indulations of 50 to 100 feet within our county. So if you're low and you've got trees around you, I've got news for you. This is not going to be the solution. However, if you have a pasture in your yard, you know, or cornfield or whatever, you're likely going to be able to get the signal to your house. So it's, this is some of the problems with fixed wireless, and we understand that. There's a potential of 706 homes in that, that are unserved in that roughly five-mile radius around the courthouse, which is just back here. There, the contract is for 300 of those to be covered.
Quickly, if I'm wrong, but right now, the contract's with the county using CARES money to carry us through one year, then after that, the CARES funding goes away and will have to be supported by the user. Now, assuming that BTS can iron out all the problems that they've got in getting the thing up and running in the first place, do you see a scenario whereby there will be people who are receiving the service now will say, hey, that's just fine. You can run fiber direct to my home, but I can't afford to pay the prescription, the subscription rate for it, so therefore I'm going to stay with, with the tower. Do you foresee that happening and BTS taking that over as the ISP there? And in effect, being a competitor right, you know, along with other folks?
Theoretically, that could happen. They're probably need enough of people to say that, that it's a business for them, but yes.
Okay. Do you think there's some reality to it? I mean, is it more than just theory?
There's a reality, you know, and again, you know, for us to cover, it also has to make sense for us because we're paying the rental space. So as long as we got enough money coming in.
And again, back to myself sustaining. I'm thinking after a year, when the CARES funding dries up, it's going to have to be self-sustaining. There's going to have to be user rates to cover whatever costs the county has with maintenance and otherwise.
We absolutely agree with you. So if it does, and that's why I can't say definitely, yes.
Whether this lasts for three years or, or?
Infinite.
Infinity.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. It has to be covered by the system if it doesn't.
You know, one thing that's really good, this is going to be competition. I mean, BTS, if they wind up being self-sustaining, ABB, APB, Starlink, that's a win-win. When you have competition, the companies have to compete and hopefully keep the rates very well if they don't want to lose to, you know, APB, to ABB, whatever. And who knows who else might come in, but it's the beginning. Three years ago, we weren't even here at this point. We were wannabes. We wanted this, and it's starting to become a reality. And it's, we all knew it wasn't going to happen overnight. But the fact is, people are going to be, those who are unserved now are going to be served in the next, well, 18 months to 2024. In that time, we're going to have hundreds more people served that are not thousands at that point, 2024, who were not served before. That's a win.
Okay. You just came in, but you have anything?
Just one brief, I'm sorry that I was late. I had another school-related function I had to attend that they put me in charge of. But, and you were saying that they're having trouble hooking up customers to the tower back here due to trees, and that's only going to get worse this time of year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there any indication that they may not be able to reach the 300 customers and therefore may not?
I don't even want to comment on that because I don't know.
We don't know yet.
Okay. Until they have everything surveyed and whatnot. We do know they'll pick up X number of customers. I don't know how many that will be.
Have they already identified a number of customers that are interested in it or trying to get it?
Yeah, they have about a list of roughly 60, of which 15 they were using as test customers. The number one person is so tree-bound, they can't get the signal in.
All right. Yes, sir.
I asked a question during a broadband meeting about a served area and an unserved area. The tower, for example, is that radius considered a served area because they offer this fixed wireless, such that if someone lived in that circle and didn't want that, they couldn't get APB to get, to come to them? Is that right? APB is kept outside of the circle because it's a served area. Is that correct?
Right now, because we signed the MOU before anything got going, that is not considered an area that's shut out from APB. We have to wait for, this is why I say I want to wait until the SEC finally rules, whenever they do, in next March, to confirm, you know, there's always a possibility. I'd rather say there's that possibility. I don't think it's likely, but let's see what happens. If that happens, then, then we have the option of perhaps going to LCBA. But quite frankly, they're coming out in the next month or so. Nicholas and I were talking to Chuck Hogg at APB, and they are going to come out and determine what is served and unserved areas, to confirm everything. And I think once that's done, that's pretty much a done document at that point.
Yeah, the second week in June, they're going to be coming, doing field visits to see, to verify the unserved and served areas. What's also important is, we may mention, Cassie mentioned the new NTIA grant, and the interesting with that grant is that's funding, federal funding, that's going to be, that's going to allow funding to go into areas that are already served. So if, if we do have areas where there's services is not up to par, in theory, we could go into, go into an arrangement with APB to say, you know, apply for these grants to go into these areas even though they are currently served. So this, this grant's a little bit different. It's not just for unserved areas, but also areas that do have servers but can be underserved. It's, it's, Cassie mentioned, obviously, a matching grant puts you a step higher, but also it's very fiber-focused. So if the application is for fiber, and the minimum is 100 megabits, but if the application's for fiber, it gets higher, it gets higher points in the process of ranking. So there, so once again, the funding is unprecedented, there's going to be more funding, it's going to be a little bit easier to get into some of these areas. So by getting service to everyone as quickly as possible, we'll be, I think we'll be serving the public very well, as quickly as possible, so everybody gets service, and then continuing to get funding opportunities and partners to step up the game in areas where we don't have fiber to the homes, eventually we do. So it's not, you know, that we said, you know, the FCC minimum is fine, we're going to accept that. We don't. We realize that to get service quickly, everyone may have to accept it for a little bit, but continue to press forward. You know, we mentioned BTS, you know, sometimes fixed wireless is a better solution. Generally not, in my mind, but there are certain times where wireless is a very good solution. But to Cassie's point, you have competition. We're going to have people, people are going to have to step up their game, they keep their prices low, or at least competitive, and they're going to improve their network, or they're also going to start losing market share. So I think we're going to see, you know, some of the incumbents, you know, improving their network also. And once again, we could also help them do that with other, with, you know, new funds coming out, new grants. So I think it's, you know, we, we certainly don't accept the minimum for the county. We want us, we want the best in breed for the whole county. And I think we laid out a plan how to get there, but do it economically. You know, you mentioned return on investment. Returning investment in broadband authorities, we didn't jump, you know, we did the analysis and we looked at, did a business case, and then if we did build fiber, it would be unsustainable. So I think, I mean, just that alone, we saved a whole boatload of money to the taxpayers by not going down that path without really doing a good analysis. And it's, so I, you know, once again, I think the times have changed, there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of funds out there. We're not accepting, you know, minimum services. We want to, we want to exceed that. We want to be the best in breed. So I think we have a plan, I think we laid out a plan to get there. Maybe it wasn't as clearly as, you know, clearly as stated as we thought it was, but that, that is our plan.
Okay, thank you. It's seven o'clock now, so let me make this statement, unless somebody else's got something quick to say, quick, quick, quick. All right, let me make this statement is, we appreciate everything that you all do. Although we may, sometimes you may get some statements that you don't like to hear made and you may make some statements we don't like to hear made, but that's the game, you know? So I like to say, you are appreciated. Turn them on.
That seemed to work, didn't it? It's scary. Here it got his off. It might be, you know, anytime there's a microphone directly on the name of speaker, that means, sorry.
No.
You want to try my mic?
It's coming right from you, all right? All right, it's, it's working now, okay. Cassie, Ms. Thompson?
Yes, technology's wonderful.
It is, isn't it? And you can check on everything. That's the good part.
Yeah.
Cassie, Ms. Thompson?
Yes, technology's wonderful.
It is, isn't it? And you can check on everything. That's the good part.
Yes, we can go.
Yeah.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. I, I would just like to say this when we, here we go again, all right. I would like to say this, when we first started our meeting at five, or at six, after the pledge of allegiance, and I just want to say this in honor of our former board of supervisor member, F.W. Butch Jenkins, that we had a moment of silence for him, and I just want to honor him again just by making this statement to you. Butch served on the board of supervisors from January 1, 1994, through December 31, 2017, and he was the second, second longest-serving board member in Lancaster County history, with 24 years of service. So I'd like to honor him, and he passed on May the fif, May the 4th of this, of, of this month. So having said that, let's move on. We're going to have our public input session. Remember, you have five minutes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda for tonight. And at the state, at, at one minute to, one minute to five of your five, let me restate that. When you have one minute left, I will hold up the sign and let you know you have one minute left. Anyone want to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Time is, you, you have a floor. Okay. Is there anyone out there in the audience by Zoom or whatever that wants to speak? If so, raise your hand. All right, no one. So we'll move on. Old business, we don't have any old business at the present time, all right? Virginia Department of Transportation.
Hey, good evening. We're going to start with the secondary six-year plan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's green. There you go. We're going to start with the secondary six-year plan public hearing. My name is David Beal. For the benefit of those who don't know me, I'm the resident engineer with the Virginia Department of Transportation. This is a joint public hearing between the Virginia Department of Transportation and Lancaster County. We're working on the secondary
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. I, I would just like to say this when we,
six-year plan. This funding is for construction projects on secondary routes. Secondary routes are numbered 600 and above. It is not maintenance funding, so it does not include potholes and pulling ditching, pulling ditches and snow removal. If you recall, last year, we took all the money from the secondary six-year plan that was allocated last year and put it in countywide funds as a placeholder. We were just in the, in the beginning of the pandemic, and we canceled all the public hearings. So you have twice as, twice as much funds tonight to allocate, or at least last year's funds, to allocate tonight. Based on our meeting from last, last month, we prepared a draft plan. I'm going to present that to you tonight. Do you have the slides that I sent down?
Yeah, Glenn, Glenn has the slides. So I'll just put it up.
There we go. You can go ahead and advance to the next one. So it's a secondary six-year plan, fiscal year '22 through '27. You can see there, there are two sources of funding, tele fees and unpaid roads. So a little over $200,000 in, in new money to allocate as part of the plan. The next slide, Oliver Lane, at the top there, is already in the secondary six-year plan. Based on your feedback from last month, we added Chestnut Grove and Davis Mill Road. And if you recall, Davis Mill Road is partially paved already. We're going to pave another two tenths of it down to that log-in entrance, past the, past the spillway down to the log-in entrance, about two tenths of that road. So that leaves about a little over a mile left of Davis Mill Road that would still be gravel road. So you see the estimates there, $45,000 for Chestnut Grove and $80,000 worth of hard surfacing for Davis Mill. The next slide shows the countywide funds. You can see one there for traffic services, right-of-way and engineering, and then also engineering and survey.
Recording in progress.
It's good to leave some money in there, just so we have funds to cover things that may come up, such as signs or speed studies, or drainage adjustments, or anything that, that might come up. We parked all the leftover funds in the countywide engineering and survey project. So you can see there's $89,000 left in there, and that'll just roll over. It'll just hold the money until we have another road to allocate that money on. So you're not losing any funding by not allocating another road. It's just a placeholder. We'll do this again next year. Traditionally, the county has spent the money on rural rustics, and these are roads that are already in the state system, so we're not adding new roads to the system. We're just hard-surfacing existing gravel roads. You can move to the next slide. The roads can't carry more than 1,500 vehicles per day. They do have to be identified as a priority, as a line item in the secondary six-year plan. We'd like these roads to be predominantly local traffic. So if you're aware of a large project or rezoning, or something that would cause that road not to fit the rural rustic character, we would ask that you not make it a priority in the secondary six-year plan for hard surfacing. And we will do additional drainage improvements. When we hard-surface the road, we'll replace culverts, entrance pipes, and, and cross pipes as needed. Next slide is a list of all the unpaid roads in the county. You can see that, that the two highlighted ones there are the ones with more than 50 vehicles per day. Oliver Lane is already in the program. Chestnut Grove is in the, is in, scheduled to be added tonight upon your, your resolution. And then we've also added Davis Mill Road, a portion of Davis Mill Road. That's the end of my presentation. Do you all have any questions for me before we take public comment?
Now, on the Davis Mill Road, when would work start on that?
When would work start?
Yeah.
It's funded. It's fully funded in FY '25.
Twenty-five.
So we have a construction date of August 25.
Twenty-five.
As we finish the projects ahead of that, we'll advance any leftover funds.
Good.
And so that, that could move up.
All right, good. Any other questions, gents?
No.
Okay, no, no further questions. Okay, we need a, need a vote on this, don't we?
No, you need to open the public hearing.
Oh, that's right, public hearing, all right.
Then close the public hearing.
Then vote. All right, I'm opening up the meeting to the public hearing on the six-year plan. Meeting open. Any comments? All right, no comments. Closed.
Chairman, I move that we approve the six-year plan.
All right, y'all have heard the motion. All in favor said aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. As have it.
Mr. Chairman, Glenn reports he had no one on Zoom.
Oh, yeah, okay. No one on the Zoom meeting. Okay, good. I keep, y'all remind me of that. I keep forgetting. All right. And you have a report, okay?
All right, I'll give my May report, maintenance report, and I'll start by letting everybody know that today was Celebrate Transportation Day. I told, I told the crew that I worked with in Warsaw today that life is short. We've got to celebrate any chance we get. So today, we celebrated transportation. The General Assembly passed, passed a bill recognizing today as Celebrate Transportation Day a few years ago. And today, we celebrated multimodal transportation. So we were out on sidewalks, and we also combined that with Virginia's For Lovers Not Litter campaign. So we picked up litter. Mike led a team in Kilmarnock and picked up mostly cigarette butts, I think, today in Kilmarnock. So happy Celebrate Transportation Day.
Did you get a bunch of VDOT mugs and stuff?
I'm sorry.
Did you give you a bunch of VDOT mugs and things like that?
We did get some Lovers Not Litter bags. We've completed pipe cleaning and ditching on Blue Heron. We did some asphalt patching on Laura, Old Salem, and Devil's Bottom, where we had replaced some pipes. Cleaned ditches on Alfonso and Fleet's Bay, and removed, continued to remove debris on Cox Farm and Black Stomp, and addressed work orders countywide. Upcoming, we'll continue the routine maintenance. I believe our contractor is getting started on the secondary mowing and litter pickup as soon as he finishes in Northumberland, which should be in the next week or so. We'll be mowing countywide, and we're working on some shoreline stabilization down in Bertrand at the end of, at the end of the road there, and we'll continue to address work orders. The plant mix, that's hot mix asphalt. That'll go down on Route 3. That contract's been awarded. They're starting on routes in King George, so I expect they'll head down this way later this summer. Cape Seal work is active, and the surface treatment, currently they're in West Moreland. The two-week look ahead I saw today showed them going to Northumberland next. So hopefully, they'll continue to loop around, and they'll be in Lancaster soon. Everything else is continued on from prior reports. Nothing new to report. Certainly, citizens are encouraged, if they have any service requests, you can, you can send those to us online, as well as calling 1-800-4-Road. And that's a 24/7, that's a line that's answered 24/7 at our customer service center. Do you all have any items for me?
Could I ask you to expand just a little bit on the Bertrand shoreline stabilization? What, what is the problem that's happening down there, and what?
Right at the end of 354, there's, at the end of the road, there's a dock there, and there's probably 500 feet, 300 and some feet there where the, the tide's just washed right up to the edge of the road.
Coming, coming right up to the end of the road there, then?
Yeah, it's closed. If you drive down there, it's closed. We've stockpiled stone, so we're, we're beginning to work on that.
Okay, you putting more riprap in there, that sort of thing?
Yeah, class-two riprap, big stone.
Well, that's good. This is county property that's being taken away.
It's my understanding that, it's my understanding that riprap is really frowned upon by shoreline people. Living shoreline is much more highly regarded as being a good long-term. Do you ever consider consulting with the master gardeners, for example, that have a living shoreline program, and consult with them to see what might be appropriate, rather than just putting riprap down?
which should be in the next week or so. We'll be mowing countywide. And we're working on some shoreline stabilization down in Bertrand at the end of, at the end of the road there. And we'll continue to address work orders. The plant mix, that's hot-mix asphalt. It'll go down on Route 3. That contract's been awarded. They're starting on routes in King George. So I expect they'll head down this way later this summer. Cape Seal work is active, and the surface treatment, currently they're in Westmoreland. The two-week look ahead I saw today showed them going to Northumberland next. So hopefully, they'll continue to loop around, and they'll be in Lancaster soon. Everything else is continued on from prior reports. Nothing new to report. Certainly, citizens are encouraged, if they have any service requests, you can, you can send those to us online, as well as calling 1-800-4-Road. And that's a 24/7, that's a line that's answered 24/7 at our customer service center. Do you all have any items for me?
Could I ask you to expand just a little bit on the Bertrand shoreline stabilization? What, what is the problem that's happening down there, and what?
Right at the end of 354, there's, at the end of the road, there's a dock there, and there's probably 500 feet, 300 and some feet there where the tide's just washed right up to the edge of the road.
Coming, coming right up to the end of the road there, then?
Yeah, it's closed. If you drive down there, it's closed. We stockpiled stone. So we're, we're beginning to work on that.
Okay, you putting more riprap in there?
Mm-hmm.
That sort of thing?
Yeah, Class 2 riprap, big stone.
Well, that's good. This is the county's property that's being taken away.
My understanding that.
It's my understanding that riprap is really frowned upon by shoreline people. Living shoreline is much more highly regarded as being a good long-term. Do you ever consider consulting with the master gardeners, for example, that have a living shoreline program, and consult with them to see what might be appropriate, rather than just putting riprap down?
We actually, we did, we did look into a living shoreline. We had a staff member who was an advocate for living shoreline in this location, and we weren't able to, to make it work. I can get you the details on it.
No, I was just curious because.
Yes, we did consider that. And we looked at several different options, and we landed on Class 2 riprap. We did consult with our partners at, I think they're still at Department of Conservation and Recreation. Some, some of those programs moved to DEQ. But the Shoreline Erosion Advisory Service, I think they're still at DCR. But we did partner with them, and this was the recommendation, the design that they gave us to, to fix it.
Thank you.
I think the real issue there, too, is riprap is entirely appropriate where it's needed. And in that area there, I would consider it needed, because when you get storm surges, they come right in there. The, the issue has been riprap being used when living shoreline would do the job. In, in that particular case, more and more encouragement is given. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Barnes, and what is, what is the advisory group that comes out and looks at that?
Well, I think one that he referenced, CEES, is, is one of the ones that we often direct citizens to. And one of the other criteria that we take into account is the value of an upland improvement that might be in danger, which a road is pretty valuable. And can that upland improvement just be moved back and allow natural erosion to take place? In this case, that's probably not what VDOT would like to do. We do have the master gardeners have, they used to call it IC program, and I, they go by a different name now.
I'm trying to think of the, of the outfit that comes out and does that.
Mostly it's, yeah, I think you're thinking of CEES from DCR, and they were around for a long time, yeah. CEES, Shoreline Erosion Advisory Service.
They were actually good to come out and look at it.
Because it's my understanding that wave action will often get behind the riprap and still erode away, but it's, it's not a stop. Well, that's my understanding.
Well, bulkhead will certainly happen, too. There's, there's a bulkhead all over the county.
Anyhow.
Sitting out there.
You've answered the question.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Okay, any, any further questions, statements? Thank you.
All right, thank y'all. Good night.
Next, we have presentations. Mrs. Andrews and Mr. Bateman.
Glenn, you got that one, too? Raft, Raft. And we got one participant zoomed in, right?
And you have one participant for, for presentations?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we've got, we've got her.
You have 15 minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to come speak with you this evening. As you know, the Planning District Commission coordinates regional hazard mitigation planning efforts, and participates in the Virginia Coastal Zone Management Program. It's in line with the Hazard Mitigation Plan, the goals and strategies of that plan, and the focal area, the resilience focal area of the coastal zone program that the Planning District seeks through the RAFT to build local capacity for resilience. And Ms. Andrews is here to present on that effort and its status for Lancaster County. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Elizabeth Andrews with William & Mary Law School, the Virginia Coastal Policy Center. And my colleague is up on the screen, very large, Tanya Denkley-Cobb from the University of Virginia. I do have a PowerPoint this evening that I sent in. Are you all advancing that, or am I?
Glenn, can you put that PowerPoint up?
And I'm going to pass the baton to Tanya in the middle of it to take over.
You, you can't have Tanya and the PowerPoint at the same time?
We have a copy in our folder here.
Oh, well, I have it on my laptop that I can just bring it up in reference, so I could borrow yours.
Thank you. Do you mind if I?
No, I, I mean.
May I bring it up here to the podium?
Yeah.
Thank you. As we've learned in the pandemic, we just make it work, right? However, thank you very much. Okay, so as you see in your packet, a bunch of logos across the bottom of the first slide, that's because the RAFT, which is an acronym for the Resilience Adaptation Feasibility Tool, and please let me know if you can hear me, because I think you all turned the microphones off earlier. Is that right? So if I need to speak up, let me know, please. It's a partnership between William & Mary Law School, the University of Virginia, and Old Dominion University, the Institute of Coastal Adaptation and Resilience there. It's a three-step process. I'm on the, the first slide after the cover. The first step is that we have developed a scorecard. Some students, graduate students at the University of Virginia, did multi, multi-scorecard research and looked at what worked and what didn't. And we had an advisory group of state government agency reps, and local government, and planning district commissions, and nonprofits, and academics who helped us to develop this scorecard. And that's used to help determine, to assess how resilient a locality's policies and programs are. Law students, under my supervision, do the actual scoring, talking to, look at this. Thank you. Do, talking to the locality staff to verify that everything is accurate. Thank you very much. So, who's controlling it, though?
He's controlling it.
You have the power. Okay.
Yeah.
Would you mind flipping to the next slide for me, please? Thank you. So, as I was saying, it's a three-step process. So the scorecard is the first step. The second step is that we normally bring together all the localities in a region to have a resilience action workshop. And as you can guess, with the pandemic, that did not happen. So we held individual workshops for the Northern Neck with each individual locality. And the localities develop, a team of people with the locality develop their own resilience action checklist of items they want to work on over a year to become more resilient. They develop their locality implementation teams, and those are a mix of county staff, or town staff, and nonprofits, and state agencies. We do have the DCRC's program that was mentioned earlier that is involved, Shoreline Erosion Advisory Service, forestry, health department. David Fridley's been very active in the Lancaster team from BDH. He's been great. And we always partner with the Planning District Commissions when we go into a region and do the scoring and the partnerships. And the Northern Neck PDC has been phenomenal. John's been terrific throughout this. And then the final stage is implementation, where we stay with the localities for a year. You know, they say, what academia, sticking around? But we stick with them for a year, and we host monthly meetings of the implementation teams, and we work our way through the checklist. Would you mind advancing to the next slide, please? Thank you. So, we started out back in 2015 to 16, did the research and the development of the RAFT scorecard, as I mentioned. Then we introduced that to three pilot localities with diversity of type, a town, a city, and a county, and geographic diversity as well. One was on the eastern shore, one in the middle peninsula, one in Hampton Roads. And learned many lessons from them, and were very grateful that they were willing to do the scorecard process and go through that, made it a better scorecard. Then we did the eastern shore of Virginia, seven localities. Now doing the Northern Neck, next doing the middle peninsula, six localities, and have already started the scoring there. Then Richmond Region has asked us to come in. Next slide, please. So, the goal is to support and catalyze locality action to increase resilience. In 2016, as I mentioned, the student team interviewed developers and recipients of five different scorecards. And the three-part RAFT process is designed to provide full-service support to help localities translate the scorecard into action to become more resilient. Next slide, please. We have five categories in the scorecard. I'm not gonna just go through them all, because you have them in front of you. But all of these different topic areas are scored in the scorecard. Next slide, please. So, the law students go online, find what they can find, verify the information with the locality staff, or find missing resources. Sometimes, there's been, for example, an ordinance update that hasn't been posted online yet. It's in a desk. And so we find that and make sure we have the most up-to-date version. Then we discuss those findings and verify them with the staff and collect feedback. Next, please. So, the five items on Lancaster County's resilience action checklist were to establish a community stakeholder resilience planning committee that would be there after the RAFT left, and then develop a resilience communication strategy and tools, restore public beaches and ensure community beach access, conduct a tree canopy assessment and increase tree canopy, and review comprehensive, the comprehensive plan for opportunities to incorporate resilience. We held a workshop for all of our current and alumni RAFT localities on April 23rd, talking about building resilience into the comprehensive plan. That's recorded, and it's posted on the RAFT website. And that is a tool that we've made Lancaster County aware of. It's available for them, as you go through comprehensive plan updates and other localities as well. We do have the Friends of the Rappahannock very actively involved on the implementation team, working on the tree canopy, increasing the tree canopy, and trying to help with that. And also brought in assistance from Karen Firehawk at UVA and her Green Infrastructure Center. Next slide, please. All right, so this is a comparison slide, very quickly, between the localities. Obviously, you all are rock stars at the top, and working our way through the checklist to become even more resilient. Next slide, please. Thank you. And I'm gonna hand this over to Tanya now, so I don't know how that works with the screen and with Tanya. Can she speak?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you, Tanya.
Okay. It's very exciting, a bit scary to see how big I am on the screen behind you all. But it's great to be with you tonight. Thank you for inviting us to give this presentation. We're very, very grateful to be here. So, this, I'm hearing a bit of a, of a echo. Yeah, that's better. Okay, I don't know what happened. So what happened was that, as Elizabeth already said, is that the idea of a workshop, all right, is there too much of an echo?
No, not here.
No, we don't hear it on air, Anne.
Okay, all right, great. I'm sorry. So, so the workshop had to be reconceived during COVID. And one of the things that happened was we had to get very creative. We had to move everything online. And we did a number of things we had never planned to do, including create information videos. We had several focus groups in the region to talk about specifically their needs to help us prepare for individual workshops. And one of the things that, as, as I mentioned, the videos that we created are available to you online. So that's something that you can look at on your, on your own time, if you have the desire. Next slide, please. Great. And so after the individual workshop that we had with Lancaster, where the checklist was created that Elizabeth shared with you, is then we moved into step three, which was implementation, working with the implementation team. And VCPC, led by Elizabeth and her colleague at William & Mary, have been leading monthly implementation team calls. We've divided up the different localities in the Northern Neck, and each of us is, is working with different localities. So you have been lucky to have William & Mary. And so the first calls with the implementation team really helped clarify and refine the action checklist. And in many of these implementation teams, the checklist kind of shifted as they really started digging in and saying, huh, well, maybe that really isn't our priority. And sometimes, other items were added. And that has been an adaptive process throughout the year. Next slide, please. So some of the common themes across the region that we've noticed, which is really fantastic, is the first one, is that so many of the localities have said, we want to have a long-term resilience committee at the local level, so that after the handoff, we're still gonna keep going. We still need to have resilience on our radar. And, and the way to do it is to have this inclusive resilience committee. And each, each locality is deciding how they want to shape that. And then other common themes are that almost everybody said, we need some kind of comprehensive coordinated communication strategy, so that people are not left out, people are not stranded during emergencies or crises that may be happening. And then another piece that was, just about everyone said, we really want to have some help in incorporating resilience in more comprehensive plans and zoning ordinances. And so we did hold a workshop in late April, and the videos are available. You have a link to that. So some good work there. And then another common theme was to identify and prioritize what needs to happen with our green, green and gray infrastructure projects. And that is really fueling you up for the grants that will be available from the state fairly soon. So I think that's it. And we're open for questions.
Thank you. One last thing that I'd like to mention is that Matt Smith has been a terrific help as well on the implementation team, and we appreciate that he's been available. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. I think we slid in under 15 minutes.
I just have one quick question. Could you give a little bit of backstory to this graph of comparison, what that means, compared, when you're comparing Lancaster to other counties, in terms of these numbers, like, what is 69? What does that, what does that mean?
So, thank you for asking that, because in, as a professor, I want to stress this point. It's not like an A to F scale. Everyone always wants to know, did I flunk, right? And so if a locality gets a score in the 50s, it shows that they're doing something towards resilience. And so that should be something that is heartening, and not, if a student got a 50-something on a paper, that would not be heartening. But, so that's why, if you look, there, a lot of the localities are already doing some things. 69 indicates, as John can tell you, that you all are already doing a lot of things right with the hazard mitigation plan at the regional level. It reflects all of those efforts. So.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next presentation, Robert Alexander, Ms. Thompson.
Can you hear me, Ms. Thompson? Okay.
Oscar.
Asking what happened to him, but he kept saying that. Okay. Well, first thing is that we did send you the memorandum in response to your request about vision and mission statements. We discussed that. The Batty Grant is continuing. Oh, one thing for everybody to know, that memo is on the county website, and it will be on, if not already, it's gonna be on the LCBA website also. So everybody would have access to what we presented to the Board of Supervisors. We're continuing to work with ABB and the other counties on the Batty Grant. The ball is now in the court of DHCD, Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, to get back to us with what's required in the next 90 days and the contract we have to have with them. So we're waiting for that. The CARES Wireless Project, Jeff Becco did a presentation last week at our meeting to answer some questions that members of the public had about lack of good communication, about how they were doing. There's been nothing really in the papers. And so we asked Jeff to address all this, which he did. And we're gonna be spending a lot more time with him looking at the performance so far by BTS on the CARES project. On the All Points Broadband, we're now in the process with A, All Points Broadband, APB, sharing the information they've requested, maps and things like that. That's been provided. We've also asked the Board of Supervisors to fund the $575,000 that are required to go ahead with this pilot project with Dominion and APB, and have that money out of the CARES Act. We have been, were made aware last week about a new grant opportunity, the National Telecommunication Information Administration. This is coming under the Department of Commerce. It's new. The closing date for it is August 17th. Just a few points of what's different about this federal grant as opposed to others. One, it has $288 billion across the country. The grants average between $5 million and $30 million. There is no matching required. However, if a locality wants to do at least 10% matching, they're gonna be looked at very favorably. One thing that's also different, in other federal grants, if one resident in a census block had power, had service, that whole region had, was considered served. Under this grant, if in that census block, there are only one or two that are served, one or two unserved, they're considering that whole block, that whole region, unserved. So that means they can go in now, we can put that region that was previously considered served because of only one resident, they can be put into this grant. What else is unique about that? unique about that? They have one year to complete the application, to complete the application and the project. There's no matching funds required, as I mentioned. And so we're looking at this and who could be potential partners, but we have to get a lot more information. This has only been out there a week, and it's a 44-page piece of information, so we're reading through it and learning. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions, gents? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome, sir.
All right. We can move on to a public hearing. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is public hearing. Public hearing number one is regarding the zoning ordinance amendment for Article One, the definitions article. As you are aware, this should be your final missing piece to have your zoning ordinance regarding solar facilities complete. There's really only four simple items that are going to be, that are proposed to be added for hearing tonight, and that is applicant, small-scale residential solar installation, utility-scale solar facility, and agricultural and commercial solar installation. About a year and a half ago, when we began this work, it was discovered by county staff that the word applicant is not defined in our county zoning ordinance. So that is not specific to utility-scale solar specifically, but something we felt was needed to be added to the zoning ordinance. So applicant is now defined with the language you see before you. Small-scale residential solar installation. It was felt early on by the Planning Commission, and county staff tried to reciprocate by creating this distinction that small-scale residential solar installation, solar panels on rooftops or small arrays in yards, should be treated as a residential use and should be generally permitted. Our ordinance does generally permit these structures, and this language helps county staff to tell a citizen what they can do and what they can't do if they want to put solar panels on their roof or in their yard. We did limit the yard arrays to 10,000 square feet. That may be pretty high, but that was just a number that we came up with because the large, some of the largest single-family dwellings in the county are upwards of 10,000 square feet. So we felt if you capped it there, you cap an array that would be on somebody's property in their yard for their own use instead of a generator, or maybe to supplement their power at 10,000 square feet, that that would be considered, quote unquote, reasonable. As you can see in this definition, they can be grid-tied, but our feeling was that the main distinction was going to be that the purpose of it was for residential use, not for a utility generation kind of capability. The other definition, utility-scale solar facility, in this definition, we define what a utility-scale solar facility should be, especially with regards to your new Article 28 that has been adopted. And as you can see there, that, that language has changed a little bit based on input from the Planning Commission and from the county attorney and from conversations with the utilities themselves. The last definition there is agricultural, commercial solar installation. Planning Commission felt early on, and county staff tried to mirror that with this definition, that farms or commercial businesses should have the ability to generate solar energy on their rooftops or in their, on their general facility campus to supplement their own power, to, to offset however, you know, whatever extra power they're using or for personal preference. We feel that this language accomplishes that. This installation could also be grid-tied, but its primary purpose would be, would be to not derive direct revenue from utility-scale sales. This item was heard by the Planning Commission on April 15th, 2021, in public hearing, and comes to you with unanimous recommendation for approval.
Gentlemen, do you all have any questions to Mr. Barnes? Okay. I'm opening it up now for a public hearing. Any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Charlie Costello, District Two. The definition, utility-scale solar facility, a standalone installation or project undertaken to generate or store energy. Now, I spoke briefly before the meeting, that this should only be storage of the energy from a generation of the energy as a facility, and you store it on-site. It is not a standalone battery-energy storage system. That is not covered by the ordinance for the utility store solar facility. I wanted to be sure that that is understood, or it should be put in here somehow, that a standalone battery storage, battery-energy storage system is not covered in this definition. Am I correct in that?
Yeah. I don't want to cut into your time, but I will say, it does say, battery or heat storage associated with a utility-scale solar project, comma, or any similar type of energy or heat capture on a commercial scale, and which is intended to market some of, or all of the production for sale to the electric grid. The way that this is written, yes, Mr. Costello is correct. That was deliberate. County staff wrote this so that if a project had, they're being colloquially called batteries, any kind of energy capture on the site has to be associated with the utility-scale solar project. The way this is written, the county right now could not accept an application for a standalone energy project. You're hearing about battery projects along gridlines where there may, might be five-acre, 20-acre, 50-acre sites where it'll just be batteries, no solar panels. That is not covered by this definition. This definition only allows energy storage if it's part of a bigger or smaller solar project. So, yeah, that's correct.
I thought that maybe needed to be parentheses or something, so if somebody cut, you know, we hear, but if it's in the definitions, they're reading it somewhere else. They come in, they argue, and maybe a problem.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I think what Mr. Costello's concern is, is the first, it's supposed to be on the white.
Standalone.
A standalone installation or project undertaken to generate or store energy. Whether that could be interpreted to be a standalone installation or project undertaken to store energy, instead of to generate or store energy. I think that's his concern.
In the, as you read it without the background, it, I would make a, you know, if somebody come along later and say, well, your definition of this is this. And I have a concern that this would create problems for us down the way, as we have an applicant come in.
I think this would, yeah. I understand your concern, Mr. Costello. I think this was discussed with the Planning Commission. I think your concern is, is justified, let's put it like that. What, what the Board of Supervisors wants to do is up to them.
Understand. Okay. I want to say one other thing. The system that the county's done now, with this packet going out, we can look at it and bring it up online and have the material available, makes a whole lot better for everybody. And I really applaud it. The only thing is, I hope we get our ordinances online quicker and quicker. I wanted to speak earlier, the raft, this survey of tree canopy, or enhancement of tree canopy.
Let's, let's stay on, on the thing we're talking about. All right.
I, I just want to say.
I understand, I understand.
We're going to cut down trees with the solar energy. But anyway, on this, you understand my concern. I think we ought to preempt a problem down the road. And thank you for your, your attention.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public, before we comment, let's hear from the public. Anyone else from the public? State, state your name, if you're from the county, your district.
My name is Richard Shell. I live in Whitestone, Virginia. I listened to earlier, I noticed nothing to do with the solar panel, which I think is very good, good. I wanted to ask the state highway department some questions. They ran out the door quicker than a sink, boat sinking. I couldn't ask them a question. You asked earlier at the beginning, to ask questions. I wanted to know what they were going to do before I could ask a question. Before I could ask the question, they ran out the door.
So how do I do, get the questions answered?
Well, let me handle, yeah. Talk, talk to your county administrator. All right. And right now, what we are talking about is this ordinance that we're getting public information on. That's all we are entertaining, information, input on right now. Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public want to talk about, want to make a comment on the ordinance that we're talking about at the present time? Okay. All right, thank you. Is there anyone online who want to comment on the ordinance that we're talking about at the present time? And so raise your hand. All right, no one. So I'm going to consider this public hearing now closed on this ordinance? All right, gentlemen, you have any comments or questions or whatever?
I have a comment that, like, when he was referring to.
Turn your mic on, Jason.
When he was referring to the standalone battery operation, that doesn't seem like that would fit under the title of, of solar. Like, how would a battery be construed? If I just came in and wanted to build battery storage, that would be called battery storage, wouldn't it? How, I don't see how that could fit under utility-scale solar, because solar requires solar panels.
And I was repeating Mr. Costello's concern. I wasn't necessarily agreeing.
No, I'm, yeah, no, I understand his concern too with, with, with what he was saying, but I'm just thinking with the title alone, being, talking about solar, that should cover that it has to be solar, include it.
The article that Mr. Costello, the article that Mr. Costello forwarded to some, I guess to everyone, talked about these huge batteries that are effective in cases where there isn't enough direct sunlight. Matter of fact, I believe I read in that about in Texas, it would have been helpful for them when they were depending on solar and the winter got so cold, the batteries would have put energy into the system. So for me, I don't see it as being such a bad thing. But what I do want to ask about is, this is a public hearing for the way this is written, and I have to agree that when it says, a standalone installation or project undertaken to generate or store energy or heat from sunlight, you can knock out any of those clauses or phrases or whatever they are. My English teacher would hit me over the knuckles with. But you can read it to say, a project undertaken to store energy. So the wording has to be changed if we don't like this wording, and.
But it goes on to state that it's consistent.
I know. I don't care about that. What I care about is, that sentence can be meant to say, store energy. And we need to be more clear than that. And my question is, if we change the wording, do we have to have another public hearing? Okay, good. Because I would be in favor of making it as clear as possible, and this is not. If it said, generate and, and store energy, that's different. And that would be consistent to me. But it doesn't say that.
That's a very simple change, to change or to and.
If you agree with.
I think if it's. Yeah, I mean, that would clarify, and it would close the gap, for sure.
If it generates this type of discussion, then it needs to be discussed and decided upon. I mean, you know.
Tonight?
Yeah, tonight.
I'm fine with changing or to and. I don't think that.
I don't see, no.
It's not a drastic change, and it does clarify it to.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that either.
I guess my understanding too is that they're building these battery storages sort of as a standalone in some places, as sort of a backup power in general.
Exactly.
Because I know in, in the past, they've had some like backup gas generation, small stations like that, so maybe they're trying to replace those with batteries now.
They are, and they talked about the expense of the gas-fired backup relative to the relative inexpensiveness of this. I mean, Tesla's making these huge batteries, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, batteries are getting more, more efficient and less and less cost.
So everybody then is okay with the revision, a standalone installation and project undertake to generate? Is everybody good with that?
No, no.
And store.
To generate?
Standalone installation or project undertaking to generate and store energy.
And change the ors to and, okay. And store energy.
Or heat or sunlight, consistent with photovoltaics. The only thing you need to change is that one or after generate.
Yeah, I think so, because in, in the second line, it goes further and says, battery or heat storage associated with a utility-scale solar project. So I think, I think with that change of and, plus that, I think it's pretty clear.
Now it's consistent.
Okay, now let me understand, make it clear. How many ors are you changing?
Just that one.
The first one after generate.
The first one, after generate, okay.
I move that we approve this ordinance with the change of that first after generate to and, and then continue the statement as is.
Okay, y'all heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now you're ready to vote on the ordinance? Okay, all in favor of passing this ordinance, of the definition ordinance, all say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, next one, Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This next hearing is a revision to your erosion and sediment control ordinance. This issue has been brought to the fore due to a five-year review of our erosion sediment control program that took place before COVID. This review by the Department of Environmental Quality uncovered the fact that our erosion sediment control ordinance was a little bit out of date, and that is due to several changes that occurred in the 2014, 2015 timeframe. Staff began to revise that before we even sent it to the Planning Commission, and I quickly discovered, along with Hannah Smith, that trying to take our existing ordinance and plug in the new changes, especially some of the references to stormwater and how that changes other parts of the article, became very cumbersome. I spoke with DEQ staff about using their model ordinance, and they said that that was probably a good idea, that using the model ordinance as a plug-and-play makes it easier for them to administratively approve, whereas they don't have to send it up to higher-level staff people in the, in the Department of Environmental Quality, or even on the secretariat level to get our ordinance approved. Being that we're under a July 1 deadline with DEQ to turn this around for them, we went with the plug-and-play option. If you look at the old ordinance and then look at this new proposed draft, it's very, very similar. It's just that the terminology is a lot more up-to-date. We did discuss a little bit with the towns, with the Planning Commission. Town was changed. That uncovered, there was actually a typo in the old ordinance regarding town, so that's good to get that fixed. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval by the Planning Commission of five to zero. With that Planning Commission revision is in here, that's been advertised, and we've heard no real comment from the public. A couple of folks I deal with in the county who are retired, environmental people have read it, and they, they like it, but you don't have anything in writing to that effect. It's, it's a little bit simpler, and this will work until, until state law gets revised again.
All right, gentlemen, y'all have heard. Mr. Barnes, you have any questions on Mr. Barnes, or any statements, before I open it up for public comment from the floor? All right. If you don't have any, all right, it is now open to the floor for any comments that you want to make on this particular ordinance. All right, hearing no comments?
Online.
Oh, online. Do we have any online? Raise your hand if you do. No online, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this revision for the erosion and sediment control ordinance be, be approved.
Can we have discussing first?
Oh, okay.
You got motion, now you can just go.
We got the motion, oh, go ahead, discuss that. We'll come back there. Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
I wasn't going to say anything, but it's not like me to be quiet. So I find it curious that number 33, the definition number 33 talks about what a town, incorporated towns, it lists all three of them. And there's no reference to any town, again, in this entire ordinance. But if you go to the. But if you go to the state ordinance, it says that a town can have its own, or if it doesn't, it'll fall within this, which is pretty straightforward. But I just, the planning commission made sure that we have, we know that a town means the incorporated towns of Irvington, Whitestone, and Kilmonic, and then there's no reference anywhere else. So I just want to make that comment. I have no suggestions, so it's serious.
Any additional comments or questions before we vote? All right, restate your motion, Mr. Lee.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that the erosion settlement control ordinance revision be passed as presented.
All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Eyes have it. Okay, the next one is application for changing of district classification. Mr. Barnes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. This issue is a public hearing to consider a rezoning request on the parcel indicated 33-194 located off John's Neck Road in District 5 from M1 Industrial to R1 Residential General. This issue comes to you with recommendation from the planning commission for approval of five to zero. This, uh, this subject in general is a little bit tricky in that this facility was once the site of a seafood crab picking specifically operation by the Abbott family and others. It's a very small parcel and a very small building and dwelling on this parcel. Things have changed, and I believe the owner who is here and can tell you more about his issues would like to sell the property. However, no one has come forward that indicates an interest in using it for the industrial use. Therefore, they would like to downzone to R1. When we look at these waterfront parcels, we don't want to lose working waterfronts to any great extent. That is true. The planning commission, in their memo from staff and in their deliberations, did consider that. I, I think you, you almost have to take these issues on a case-by-case basis. It's very difficult to blanket say, "You're not going to approve any M1 waterfront downzoning to R1", because that may be confiscatory to some of these smaller sites. I think what an applicant has to prove, and this is what I've told every applicant who's talked to us about this in the last year or so especially, is there's been a renewed interest in any little residential piece that's out there left for sale. As you all know, the, the inventory is very low right now. We, we indicate to potential applicants that, that you need to indicate that there's really no future for this parcel in the seafood industry. With a seafood site now, you need a good septic system. You really almost need a sewer system to handle the amount of washdown water that the health department requires, that DEQ requires, that shellfish sanitation requires when you're processing and packing seafood. Is there good access for trucks to get in and out? Is there, is there lots of deep water there? Are there, there are all these things that really lend a property to having a future in serving Lancaster County's waterman community? Or is that so limited that really the highest and best use now is as a waterfront residence? That's a very difficult thing to consider, and everybody's going to have their different opinion. But that's something that we've thrown at every applicant. And I think this applicant would agree that I, I had long discussions with him about that before he applied. The other thing that needs to be considered, and that's what I gave to the planning commission, as you see in their packet, is the consideration of possible waterfront access for the public, either a public waterfront access or, or through a private marina use. You don't want to totally wall the county, the landward county citizens off from the waterfront either. In, in that case, I think a visit to this site and kind of looking at the map, it's less than a half an acre of Upland or Fastland, as they say. And that's really pretty limited. It is located off of a nice state road, and it's curb and gutter right to the edge of this property. But it probably does not have a future for public access either. So those things were considered by the planning commission. I think that's why they have given you a recommendation for approval of five to zero. I have received no, no protest, no written protest, and no, uh, one adjacent property owner, Mr. Brown, did call me and, and did not express any sort of, of opposition.
Okay, gentlemen, you've heard Mr. Barnes. Any questions, statement before opening up to the floor?
I have one quick question. It says this parcel is 1.03 acres.
That includes the, the bottom, bottom land, yes, sir.
So it's relatively small. Is this fallen or grandfathered for being, it'd be built on for the Bay Act?
Correct, yes, sir.
Does that require a two-acre parcel now?
Yes, sir, yeah.
So this would, this would-
It could not, it could not be further divided, but it could be, yeah, it could be built on.
A single-family home could be built on it, okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
In this particular part of John's Neck, hasn't there been movement over, say, the last, even the last 20 years to convert a lot of these M1 properties to residential? And as such, going residential here would be more in keeping with what you've got there right now, right?
You are correct, Mr. Larson. This body did approve M1 to R1 rezoning just a few years ago for the adjacent parcel that Mr. Brown now owns immediately next door that you see on that little card I give you of the APO study. Yeah, that was done less than 10 years ago, yes, sir. Yep, so there is a movement in that direction.
Additional comments, questions? All right, the meeting is, are open to public hearing on this audience? Anyone from the public want to comment on this audience? I mean, audience? All right, hear none? Anybody online? Raise your hand. Ordinance, all right. Public hearing is closed concerning this ordinance, all right? And what's your, what's your motion, so? Anybody?
I move-
It's your district.
I move we approve this reclassification. I'm familiar with this property, and I think it's the best use, and it gives his the best chance of doing what he wants to do, which is sell it. And whoever buys it will be much better off having it zoned this way. So I move that we approve this classification.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, the ayes have it. Okay, application for change of zoning district classification. Mr. Barnes?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this item up for public consideration is public hearing number four. This is a request for rezoning by Robin and Jackie Barrett to rezone a parcel from R1 Residential to A2. This property contains 19.5 acres, more or less, and is located off of Route 600, Lera Road. This, this considerate, this application was considered by the planning commission for recommendation and comes to you with a recommendation for approval of five to zero as well. This property, as the applicant indicates in their submittal and in their survey that they submitted to county staff, was surveyed quite a while ago, was purchased by the current owner a couple of years ago. The, the current owner is here and can explain further and probably better than I. When they purchased this property, they were under the impression that the entire thing was A2. We even had discussions about timber management on this parcel a couple of years ago, and the subject of the zoning of this parcel never came up. Later on, and, and over the winter, the property owner came to county staff and indicated that there's this chunk in the middle of this larger parcel, it's two parcels kind of put together, that is A2. And we discussed doing a boundary line adjustment and doing away with the smaller parcel and just making it one master parcel. I, I will be honest with you, as, as planning director, I did tell them I did not feel comfortable doing a boundary line adjustment and allowing that 19.5 acres to be absorbed into the rest. We do minor boundary line adjustments of two adjacent parcels that may have a differing zoning. And if it's very small, maybe just a percent or two of a zoning change, that, that zoning can generally creep over a little bit, but not to the effect of 19.5 acres. So prior to them being able to do a boundary line abandonment or any kind of lot line adjustment, they really need to have the, the whole mass of these two parcels together be A2 together or R1 together. Being that the larger parcel's A2, it did kind of make sense. So, so county staff forwarded this application on to the planning commission, and, and it comes to you with this submittal packet. And I've highlighted the discussion from the planning commission. And if there are any questions on that, I would be happy to answer them.
All right, any questions, statement?
Couple of statements here under the discussion, the first paragraph in the discussion, Brian. It says the request of this applicant is involving a parcel that is already developed in timber uses. Does that mean that, that simply mean that there's timber on it?
It's timber managed, yeah. It is managed currently in, in high-management timber, yes, sir. Yeah, and I do like to point out to people, and I'm, you know me, I come from an ag and timber background. Timber and agriculture is still development. People always say, "Oh, he's a developer." Well, legally, managing a property for timber is a, is a development. Yes, sir, yeah.
Second thing there is, is the parcel borders on a large block of R1 zone parcels of smaller size with some, some single-family residents. How many single-family residents are in close proximity to that property?
Well, you see on your APO list of folks we noticed, there are, there are, all of those, with the exception of two of them, are single-family residences. All along Route 600, Lera Road there, that big block there, they are all single-family residences. Now, not all of them have a single-family residence on them currently, but most of them do. Most of them are occupied dwellings. So there's probably seven or eight just right in close proximity. Yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other comments? All right, at this time, I'll open the floor up to a public comment. Any public comment? Yes, sir.
This property, this 19 acres, has really been treated as a portion of a larger 269-acre parcel for probably 100 years. The 269-acre parcel was owned by the Hubbard-Chilton Trust and has been since the early 1900s, I believe. In 1942 or 46, it was a 19-acre parcel that just kind of was in the middle of this 269 acres. Mr. Rand-Chilton purchased that for himself. It has not been any homes, nothing on that property. All been managed with timber. It's all still in timber, in growing, growing timber. Mentioning the houses that touch that particular 19 acres, it's four parcels that touch that and two houses. And I have spoken with three of the four adjacent landowners, one being in Maryland and not being able to get in touch with the three of the four adjacent landowners I spoke with this when we submitted the application. So, have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments on this ordinance? All right, online, raise your hand if you have any comments concerning this ordinance? Okay, no one online. Okay, so the public here now on this ordinance is closed. All right, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know how you intend to place your motion on this particular thing. But, and normally, when there's a downzoning, that's almost, it's all planning director. It's almost a brain, no-brainer, you know, you go along with it. But since we have approved A2 for utility scale solar facilities, I have a problem with this one, because as we all know, I'm on record as not agreeing with that change to the zoning ordinance.
All right, okay. Any further comments? Okay, since this is in District 2, I move that we approve this rezoning ordinance from R1 Residential to General A2 Agriculture General. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, so that's four to one, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consensus docket.
Okay, you heard the motion to approve the consensus docket. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the salaries and invoices, total invoices for $758,227.78. Total payroll, $307,768 for a grand total of $1,065,928.46. Capital improvements included $302,950.30 and expenditures of cares funds of $8,032.40.
Okay, you've heard the, the expenditures and the, shucks.
The motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor of it, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, I had something else on my mind at that time. All right, let's move on. Awards of contract for the approval of fiscal year capital improvement budget items to regrade and repave the Kilmonic Refuge Convenience Center. Mr. Brown?
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you all are aware of the situation and the severity of the parking lot at the Kilmonic Convenience Center, I ask the board's consideration of awarding a contract for the FY '21 capital improvement budget item to regrade and repave the Kilmonic Center. It was requested at the October 2020 meeting to obtain a second set of bids with a specific set of specifications to be drafted for the asphalt companies to bid on. This was done, but the companies failed to bid on the project. As a result, I have obtained three proposals that you had before you in which each company has set their own specifications. It is my recommendation to the board to consider awarding the contract to C.W. Davis Paving to complete the paving project at the Kilmonic Center in the amount of $60,000. Any questions?
I'm just, I'm just curious about, what I remember reading was that if, if they did it to their specifications, they would back it up, they would-
They would guarantee it.
I'm looking for a word too, guarantee it. But if we were to give them specifications-
It would not be guaranteed.
They would not be. So how long is a guarantee on this paving? Is it something like a year, two years or something?
I have no timeframe with the guarantee.
But we know they do warranty their work. They do guarantee it.
They do warranty their work, yes.
From what I remember, like, part of the discussion about not moving forward at that time was a part of that drainage and culvert problem there at the road. Is that being addressed in this properly?
No, this is not being addressed at this time. That will be addressed at a later date.
By a different contractor or potentially?
Potentially VDOT.
Potentially VDOT, okay.
How long will it be closed? How long will it be closed?
Um, approximately one week.
Oh, okay. I can take a week, yeah.
In regards to that, do we know when that's going to happen? Because we need to give quite a bit of notification to the public, I think, that that's going to be closed, because that facility gets a lot of use.
Yeah, it does. Oh, we would receive prior notification in advance to them showing up to do the paving. So I think that we can, we can do that.
And is there any, like, way to put it like, you know how people go down there and just throw trash out anyhow at the gate? Could we put a temporary dumpster or something at the gate or something in order to stop that? I don't know.
That's a good idea. I don't think that would be a good idea.
What about, what about, and I'm just throwing this out there, could we put roll-off containers, say, at the middle school parking lot while this repaving is being done as an alternative to give the folks?
I was wondering that same thing.
Well, I think, you know, Mr. Russell, you know,-
I know, but is that something that you all would even like for me to pose the question to? If, I mean, I'm just-
As much, as much trash that comes to this site, to block that off for a week? I mean, I've been there in the early afternoon when either you or someone else told me that thing was empty this morning.
Yes, correct.
And you've got to get in there with a rake to move everything around. So an alternative position, a, a site would be wonderful if we can-
Well, why would be a good location where you're talking about at the middle school rather than in their parking lot is the, what they used to call the annex or whatever? The one they supposed to be rebuilding now for the preschools? Is put it in that section right behind it? There's a parking lot back there that they've expanded. And just have some signs directing people there.
It's a lot of construction going on right now at-
In that site, okay.
So, and I'm just throwing this out there. I don't even know. And Donald and I haven't talked about this. What's your thoughts on that, Donald?
We would definitely have to look at a separate location to accommodate the citizens on the lower end of the county. While this-
While this was taking place.
I think you should at least look to bring back some considerations and see what we can do, because I think we need to do something, because it is, like, there is no other really dump in this side of the county, and.
Yeah.
The amount of use it gets, it would be hard for people to go a week, I think, and not start going down there and just trashing out like they've done when the thing is closed for an hour, there's bags being dumped.
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll talk with Superintendent Russell about this and see if it's a possibility, and then I'll bring, bring that back to you in June.
Well, I would be in favor of awarding this contract to C.W. Davis, but I would also like to have at least a sentence of how long they would warranty this. I don't know what happens, what could happen that would be a terrible thing.
Right.
But should something happen and we don't have any guarantee, then that's on us.
And let me just, just add something to what Dr. Westbrook is saying. Definitely, I'm in favor of doing this, but since we not fixing the drainage problem at this time, I think a guarantee, some type of written guarantee is, is need to be done because, you know, we got water, we got that big dip going down there, we got all those and those, that problem is not being addressed at this time, so that could cause some, some future problems with the new pavement going in. So I think Mr. Davis need to, you know, need to explain, okay, you know, we got this problem, what happens if, if this happened, you know, that type of thing, and get that in writing.
Okay.
But I think we definitely need to move ahead with the paving.
I agree with that. I was reading in one of these, they did give a warranty, I don't know if it was Mr. Davis or not.
It says C.W. Davis contractors will warranty new driveways, I don't know if it meets the definition or not, for a period of two years.
Yeah.
So if we change.
Well, I mean, I move that we approve the contract with a two-year warranty.
I have another comment. I would totally agree that we need, you need to come up with an alternative site. I've used that place enough to know, like, you can get a feel for just how much comes in there, and when you think about the number of districts that would flow in there. The only concern I have is that there was a project that was approved last October that is still hanging fire, as Mr. Gill knows, and I'd hate to see that project put off so that we can do this thing within four weeks. That's all I'm saying, and I'm talking about the Nutsville project, as he well knows. So I know that C.S. Davis is the contractor for the asphalt on that, right?
Yes, correct.
Please, please do not do a shuffle that puts that behind it.
There will be no shuffle. Nutsville is going to be the first center to get paved.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
I don't want to see this, Nutsville, all of a sudden, as we get real close, put to the side.
Go ahead and tell the board the timeline for the Nutsville.
Well, the timeline for Nutsville is June first. June first, the compaction unit will be hauled away for refurbishment. On the second, top notch concrete will be there to excavate the concrete pad and repour a new concrete pad.
That's, that's music to my ears.
Then, then after that's complete.
And I'm glad to hear it, because the last correspondence of the many I've had with Mr. Gill, and you, said that you, that you hadn't, that there was supposed to be a one week notice, and you hadn't received any word on that. So what you're telling me right now is an update of that, right?
Yes.
Yes. So I don't see how the Nutsville project is going to get jumped by this one when Nutsville is going to start next week.
Yeah.
That's all I want to know, Donald.
And there's no problem with the concrete pads over there and.
I'm all behind it.
Irvington.
Um, they will have to be replaced in, in about two to three years.
All right, okay, Jim, any other questions or whatever, entertain a motion?
No, I mean, I made the motion that we approve the contract with the caveat that they provide the two-year warranty that they state.
Do we want to put that in there? I don't think with two-year warranty, I don't think we want to put that in there.
It says right before that, it says, C.W. Davis contractors will not warranty overlays of driveways and parking lots as we do not know the subbase, so.
Is this an overlay?
Basically.
This, this is a parking lot and it is an overlay. So I, I think it's going to create more problems if you try to get them to.
And I will amend the motion that we approve this as, as presented.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, motion have.
Maybe we can send Guido to talk to him.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Those guys from this kind of business.
All right, consideration of award of contract to, we just finished that one. Okay, yeah, there we go. All right, Mr. Cornwell?
No, this one is me, Mr. Chairman, this is.
I'm trying to rush things through here, evidently.
This is consideration item number three.
I know what I'm getting mixed up with.
Yeah, proposed abandonment of point zero nine nine miles of public roadway at the end of Virginia State Highway six thirty-seven, better known as James Warf Road in District Five. You'll remember that you held your public hearing on this abandonment back on January the twenty-eighth. Some of the adjoining property owners had zoomed in, and VDOT had said that they needed some clarification, and so you tabled any action after you closed that public hearing. The state code says that you have to make a decision within four months of that public hearing. This would be your last opportunity to do that. I've talked with VDOT at length, and David asked me earlier, did he need to hang around? I told him I didn't believe so. We believe that all issues have been addressed with this, and I'd ask that you all approve this abandonment and authorize the county administrator to execute whatever VDOT documents are required to make it happen.
Any questions, Mr. Gill?
I guess the only question this was a question that I had asked Mr. Beal before. We are confident that that road end, do that go to the creek, right?
We are positive.
Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
No, is this a public hearing?
No.
No, it's not a public hearing, consideration item.
I'm as confused as I could ever be, I suppose. I move that we approve this resolution for the abandonment.
All right, you've heard the motion, all in favor said aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Ayes have it. Okay, I know what's throwing me off.
There's too many things on this agenda.
And it's color-coded.
You made this long agenda.
Wait till June.
Now, Mr. Cornwell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of board, the General Assembly in its wisdom made substantial changes to the election laws for the Commonwealth of Virginia. One of those changes was to require separate voting precincts in jurisdictions. I had contacted the registrar and asked her if there were any split precincts. By split precincts, meaning a census district had been split, one, she told me no. But then a new interpretation came down from the state board of elections that split precincts would include precincts in which the towns had different voting precincts in them. And we do have that. We have that in, I think, Kilmonic, Whitestone, and Irvington. Kilmonic, in fact, has, is in three separate precincts, parts of Kilmonic is in three separate precincts, precinct four one, three oh two, and five oh one, plus some of North Umland Counties in there, too. Kilmonic has part of North Umland County in it. That's North Umland County's problem, I'm not going to talk about that. Whitestone is in three oh one, and Irvington is in five oh one, and it's also split. So, in order to go forward on our elections this year, we need to ask the Virginia Department of Elections to waive the existing split precincts for this coming election. Then, when we do our redistricting, once we receive the census documents, which we've not yet received, we will have to go about trying to create separate precincts for the separate towns. Does that make any kind of sense? Because it was a long, convoluted process for the state board of elections and the General Assembly statute. And it may be that General Assembly in its wisdom, once again, will change the statute. That's the only issue I have, is that you use General Assembly and wisdom in the same sentence. It's a good thing I'm on public right now. Moving along. So we need to ask that, and this is common throughout the Commonwealth.
So really, this is just a temporary until the census?
Yes. It's only for the elections occurring in November of two thousand, twenty twenty-one.
I move for approval.
All right, and before we vote on this, any, any comments, questions? All right, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Ayes have it.
Wait till you get to redistricting, and we'll see what we're going to do.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Barnes?
Yes. All right, this is for your consideration of, consideration of having.
Okay.
I'll take, I'll take Jack's.
This would be for possible consideration of having a public hearing for a no-wake zone on Indian Creek. This has been done different ways in this county in the past. In some cases, an applicant would come forward with a compelling case for a no-wake zone, and staff might immediately schedule that public hearing for you all to have a public hearing and then post a resolution adopting that no-wake zone, and then it goes on to the Department of Game and Animal Fisheries, now known as Department of Wildlife Resources, to post that section of a creek or water body with a no-wake zone. This case is unique because this water body bisects the, bisects the county line, so this water body is shared by North Umland and Lancaster County. We went back trying to find an exact survey that shows where that line is, and from what I can see, this applicant desires to post the buoys in the middle of the controlling channel, so it would affect Lancaster County residents as well as North Umland. We frankly have a lot more commercial interest on that creek than North Umland does, with Indian Creek being their main, their main waterfront facility, whereas we have the granary at the end of Waverly Avenue, we also have Chesapeake Boat Basin, and a lot of other activity that goes on. So we did some research and looked at the way Gloucester County and even Newport News, some of those localities, what they will do is either make the applicant show the county that the Department of Wildlife Resources will not post it as a no-wake zone without county blessing first, or they, the staff will do what I'm doing now, which I felt was more prudent to, to pose it to the elected body and to say, this individual has come forward wishing to apply for a no-wake zone. How do you feel, do you feel it necessary to post a public hearing at this time and go through that process of advertising and then holding it? Or do you think there's really no compelling case at this time? I, I mentioned that to Mr. Darlock a while back and said that this was what I was going to do. In that interregnum, his, his hearing was held on the North Umland side, and it did not go well. There was a lot of public opposition, both from Lancaster County residents who went to the courthouse in Heesville and spoke against his request, and also from other North Umland County residents. So with that being said, you have this email that Mr. Darlock sent me this week saying that he is kind of in a holding pattern with North Umland, and he wants to speak to some of the folks who spoke against his request. So, so what I would recommend to you as staff is that you probably do not need to schedule a hearing for this in June, because I think it's going to take them a little bit longer than the North Umland County June Board of Supervisors meeting to get their things ironed out. That gives staff a little more time. We worked on reworking the application for no-wake zone, so I, and of course, Indian Creek has not had a chance to fill that out yet. Really, all we have is this letter and their sketch showing where they want to have a no-wake zone. We've been discussing this issue with concerned citizens on the Lancaster side. I don't see any of them here tonight, I don't believe, so, so I think they know that we're holding off. That is up to you guys. If you did want to hear it for June, I could be ready for that. If you just wanted to wait till July or August, or perhaps if this request does not prevail in North Umland at all, I don't think there's any reason for you to hear it, because it'll, that request would be dead in the water, pardon the terrible pun, but.
I received an email from another member basically saying the same thing, that they were going to pull this until they could answer questions from North Umland, and essentially at this point, it was on hold.
So before you guys get calls, obviously you already have, I just wanted to put it on your radar screen, and I think from now on, this is what staff would like to do. If we get a concern from a citizen about a no-wake problem, be it safety, erosion, what have you, the usual no-wake concerns, what we would like to do is, is put that together and do it, give it to you, give, give you all the evidence, and allow you to decide whether you want to schedule it for a hearing in consideration or not. And that way, staff can still have the application that we would do later, but, but that's the way it's done in a lot of our neighboring counties, and that, that seems to work better. If you open it up to just a, a may, a wherefore with, hey, here's an application, I think you might get peppered with a lot of no-wake zones. Everybody, everybody wants people to go slowly by their pier when they're tied up beside it. We do have to share, because this is public water, so, so that's up to you guys, I'll stand by with whatever you direct staff to, to do.
Any comments, questions?
Just go ahead, Mr. Lee.
You know, I hear Mr. Barnes saying, you know, bring this back July, I'm not in favor of bringing it back at all. This, this is a very selfish request from, from the yacht club. I, I personally grew up on Indian Creek. My grandfather and my father, all of us kept boats up in the cove above the boat basin, and personally, I had witnessed every day for the last fifteen years during the summer, the, the kids from not only at the yacht club out there sailing, but the kids from the, from the camp, everybody out there using the waterways at the same time. There has not been one single incident out there where somebody was going to get hurt or something like that. So this is something to, to plead to their patrons over there, you know. I, I listened to the public hearing, and when you got a person that's, I guess he's the president of the yacht club, get up and say, well, we could have had a five-star instead of a four-star rating if we didn't, we had a no-wake zone, but that, that told me something right there. So I, you know, bringing this back at all, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to change my mind in one month, two months, or six months on that waterway, because it's a public waterway. And Indian Creek, if you're not familiar with it, it's no small creek. It's not some cove stuck up in the back corner somewhere. This is a main waterway, public waterway that's commercially used and used for recreation by all the people up and down that creek. And, and they, what they are saying is, hey, we want this for our private, private use, and, and I'm not, I'm not going to stand for that. That's what's got us in trouble here now, and we running around looking for public access and trying to get people on the water and, and so they can enjoy the water just like some of the privileged few in the county. And I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm not in favor of hearing this anymore.
All right.
I don't think I need to say anything, Mr. Chairman.
All right, did we just get a consensus, or do we want to vote on this?
But there is another issue that's come up in the past, many years ago, and it's one, I think it's one of the reasons we don't, along with what Mr. Lee's talking about, is who enforces these things? It's always come up, you know, we, we put them in, and then, then it's a constant headache, and, and there's no good answers to who even enforces it. So why do you have something like this if it's not going to be properly enforced? So, you know.
I entertain a motion. I think we vote on it, no, don't come back, make it official. Mr. Lee, you want to put that to a motion?
My motion would be that the proposal for a no-wake zone on Indian Creek be not considered in the future.
All right, you've heard the motion, all in favor, that's it.
Discussion.
Okay, yes, sir.
We, we had the same thing happen in Irvington, where we put a no-wake zone by the yacht club, one branch of Carriage Creek, heading towards the tide ten, and I was completely in favor of that because of the junior sailing, it's a, it's a much more narrow body of water, but the junior sailing and what happens at the yacht club, not because they were special people, but those boats banging around when someone wants to go water skiing down that part of the creek, when they've got another part of the creek that they can do that all they want. There was a question of erosion, I don't know that that question was ever settled or not, but I just want to go on record as saying, I think there is a place for no-wake zones. This would seem like if it's a wide body of water, perhaps it's not appropriate. This would seem like if it's a wide body of water, perhaps it's not appropriate here. But there is a place where no-wake zones make a lot of sense for the safety of everyone.
Yeah, in this body of water, we talking about.
And this point where they talking is not a little narrow.
This is in the center of the creek.
Right, right. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, motion's carried. Okay, resolution of adoptions of the operating of a capital improvement budget, Mr. Gill?
Mr. Chairman, uh, after five budget meetings and one devoted, uh, completely to the capital improvement budget, uh, you have the resolution for adoption of the F, proposed FY twenty-two budget. This is primarily the expenditure side. You'll deal with the revenue side when you get to the tax rate, tax levy ordinance. Uh, you held your public hearing on the budget, uh, back on April twenty-ninth. You've waited more than the required seven days before considering action, uh, on this budget. The Code of Virginia says you have to adopt, uh, the county budget by July the first. Uh, so I don't know what more I can say. We've gone over this, uh, a lot during those prior meetings and, uh-
You need to say no more, I move for approval.
All right, yeah, all right. We, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, okay, ayes have it. All right, consideration of adoption of the proposed tax levy, okay?
No, you, you don't, number seven.
I keep skipping. All right, number seven, all right, Mr. Gill?
All right, now that you've adopted the budget, you have to appropriate the funding for it.
I'll move for appropriation of the budget.
All right, you've heard the motion, all, one comment, okay? I'm moving.
I, I would like to see us not appropriate the full amount that was included in the budget for the broadband authority, given the change in direction that's occurred. But at the time we went, approved that, we felt that there was going to be a much greater level of effort on the part of the broadband authority and they would need corresponding support. As it stands right now, I'm not sure, I think they recognize that they're not going to need that full amount, but they're not sure exactly what the impact's going to be. So I, I would like to see us appropriate, uh, say, half of that, or three hundred thousand dollars would be more appropriate. Excuse the double use of words, but I would like to see that happen rather than the full amount. Okay? And so I would, I would offer a motion that we, uh, appropriate the funding for, to support the, uh, FY twenty-two budget, with the exception of the broadband authority where we appropriate at this time, three hundred thousand. And then towards the mid-year, when we do our mid-year review, we look at how much they need, how much they've spent, and adjust accordingly.
All right.
I will retract my motion and support that one.
All right, any additional comments? Okay, that was motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, you've heard the motion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, so-
And that was three hundred thousand?
Uh, yeah, all right.
It just leaves a hundred and forty-four thousand unappropriated.
Right.
But still in the budget.
Right, I could have ordered, yeah.
Basically, appropriate the, the budget with the exception of the broadband authority.
Okay, all right, so the next one is, um, the tax levy, okay?
There you go, yeah. Uh, gentlemen, this is the consideration of adoption of your proposed calendar year twenty twenty-one tax levy ordinance. Uh, you also held your public hearing on this at your April twenty-ninth meeting. Uh, the only rate that is proposed to be changed is the personal property tax rate. Uh, you authorized me to advertise three dollars and seventy-five cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. That's up from the two dollars and four cents of assessed value, uh, at which the rate currently is. The Code of Virginia requires that you adopt a tax rate prior to the date that the next fiscal year begins, also July the first. Uh, in your packet, I provided, uh, at an earlier request, uh, the synopsis sheet for the county budget with revenues at different, uh, personal property tax rates, uh, going all the way from the current two dollars and four cents, uh, in twenty-five cent increments up to the proposed three dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, so you can see how the, the revenues are reflected. You can see how the ending fund reserve balance is affected at those diff, uh, differing personal property tax rates. Uh, you can always adopt a rate that is lower than what you have advertised. Uh, you can't go higher, uh, so you can adopt, uh, something less than the three seventy-five. Uh, and the last, the final comment I would make would be that at any of those proposed tax rates, uh, your minimum, uh, seven percent of projected expenditures, uh, that you adopted in twenty eighteen as the floor for your fund reserve, at any of those personal property tax rates, you're well above that seven percent minimum.
When you're showing these percentages here under the fund balance percentage, is that what you're talking about here?
Yes.
So we're at like sixteen-three?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Sixteen-fifteen.
All right.
Of our fund balance, so we're like, more than double our floor?
Yes.
All right. Gentlemen, the way I would like to handle this is since we all agree on the real estate tax, uh, the boat, the machinery and tool tax, merchants' capital and all of the personal property except this specific, uh, specifically exempted, that we, I would, I would, uh, like for us just to vote on that and then come back to the personal property tax because I know we got discussion on that part. Is that agreeable to you? All right, so at this particular time, I move that we, uh, accept the, that we, um, approve the real estate tax as advertised, all boat, water taxes advertised, machinery and tool tax as advertised, merchants' capital as, as advertised, and all other personal property except as specially exempted as advertised. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed, nay. All right, now we coming back to the personal property tax, Mr. Gill has talked to us about that and the documentation he has in your, on, on it for us on that, uh, on that area. All right, uh, any comments? I know we have some, any comments on the personal property tax?
Well, I, I would, I would say this, um, when we, back a few months ago, when we was discussing the personal property tax and, and whether we should raise it and we, we looked at three seventy-five, all of our thoughts, at least I think all of our thoughts was to pay for broadband. And as we have found out over the several weeks now, and especially tonight, things have changed. Things have changed and, and the executive, uh, that we've hired, he said there's a lot more funding out there than, than there's ever been before and, and all that. So the need that we were proposing, that we needed to raise this money, money for has, I hate, hate to say this because sometimes things will bite you, has gone away. You know, you know, the, the main thing that we was pushing now is not there. So I think the necessity to go to three seventy-five or to raise the personal property taxes is not, not there like we was talking about three or four months ago.
All right, I, I'm in agreement with, uh, what Mr. Lee just stated because we advertised this as for the purpose of broadband and since we're not going to be now, look like we don't need it for broadband, I, I would say we shouldn't raise it.
Oh, I, I agree we shouldn't raise it that much. But I will point out that we also talked about, um, changing the land use, uh, which is going, of course, it doesn't happen immediately. So perhaps we could do that but not change the tax rate, but we would end up changing the tax rate to take care of it. And the other thing was the insurance, employee insurance contribution. So I agree, the main thing was for broadband. We did have those two additional things that we were going to try to cover and, um, I don't know, I think we ought to look at our debt service too. Some things will be, uh, taken care of, I guess. I don't really have a thought for what the tax rate ought to be. Because my, all the air went out of my balloon.
From my standpoint, I'm not in favor of voting for any rate higher than the two twenty-five max. That would be the highest I'd go, but I'm in favor of, since we don't really need the money at this point and considering that transportation is needed by everybody to get to work would be to basically keep this level this year, considering COVID and all the effects of that and impact that's had on the working, working class.
Okay, any additional comments?
The working class is going to be impacted, or has been impacted, by the need for revenues, which have been unfunded mandates coming down, which have been the work on the new school. I would hate to see us continue with a tax rate that brings us down real close to seven percent. Because you, you know what's going to happen to y'all next year, it's going to happen to, to me as a member of the board, but you're going to see more and more pressure. And I'd hate to see it come down to seven, especially after all the good work that Dr. Westbrook did, where he showed that over half of the cars for the vehicles were going to be valued at under four thousand dollars. The impact will be on those that got a great break because of the boat tax going away. I'm not going to argue with anybody anymore that the benefits are there for the marina operators, but boy, I, it troubles me greatly that people who own boats walked into this courtroom with shoes on their feet that were more valuable than their, probably the taxes they were paying. It's time for them and it's time for me to pony up on the personal property tax. So I, I just can't, I can't buy the argument that we're hurting the working class because we're going to hurt them one way or the other. I'm, I'm sorry, it must, the, the, the main thing that's got to be done is just keep working on bringing expenditures down every way you can. So I would like to see us adopt a tax rate somewhere greater than the, than the lowest, than the, than the present amount. And I'm open to any of the, along that line.
One of the, uh, three examples, I guess, two examples, matching two counties, matching three counties. If we matched the other three counties, the average of the other three counties, that tax rate would be three twelve. And on that spreadsheet, you can see what that means. The argument was made that this is a regressive tax and it hurts poor people the most and it does not.
Amen.
Because you could look at the average loan value for a vehicle at this tax rate and see what it costs on a yearly, monthly, weekly, daily average. And some of these vehicles, uh, it's twenty-five cents a day. It's the average. No, that's the tax increase for the average vehicle of that tax range. I want to make sure, I didn't say that as well as I should when I did the presentation, but, uh, a vehicle in the category of nine thousand dollars loan value would pay, the average of those vehicles in that range would be twenty-eight cents a day. Now, you can't tell me that that impacts poor people very much because it doesn't. And I will say this and I'll probably be castigated for it and I won't get into wherever I'm supposed to go after I pass away, but there's a lot of people who have bad habits and it costs them a whole lot more than twenty-eight cents a day. And yet we don't ever think about that. So all I'm saying is, if we're going, I think we are going to need to raise our rates over time. And I think three dollars and twelve cents, I said I didn't have any preconceived ideas, but I think three dollars and twelve cents puts us at the average of the other three counties. Richmond County's paying three dollars and seventy-five cents. They any richer than we are? Are they, you know, they're, it's, the impact is the same. It's what you get for your money. It's what the citizens get for the taxes that they pay. If we have no reason to do the taxes, forget it. We, we shouldn't tax anybody anything. So, yes, broadband went away and that was a big, big deal, uh, because that was very important. But there are other things. We have capital improvement and we can do this every year and we can, I mean, Jack and I won't be on the board, but you guys next year can talk about how in the world are you going to handle this when, when the capital improvement proposal, whereas this year it was one million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, next year you're looking at five million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand. The year after that, eight million, eight hundred, uh, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Now again, you have debt that's going to be retiring and so you'll have more available money. But just to keep getting by on the cheap all the time and being behind the power curve doesn't make any sense to me. We mentioned during that presentation that the annual debt service for middle school renovation was six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So if you wanted to add six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to the one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars for the difference in land use and the one hundred and two thousand dollars for the insurance, you, you'd have a more balanced approach, I believe. So is there a motion on the table now?
Well, no.
No.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there's one other thing too. I think we're closer to getting fishing pier or fishing piers in this county than we have been in the whole time I've lived here, the twenty-six years I've lived here. And that's not something that's in the capital improvement budget, but I think if we can make it happen, we want to make it happen. And so there'd be some funding requirement for that. And again, I, I, it, it gives us a little bit of room so that we don't, aren't coming back next year, or you all aren't coming back along with the new board members and looking at having to raise the real estate tax, which I think is, is really what we shouldn't be.
I, I think one thing we have to think is that our fund balances have been steadily growing since we put in place that seven percent threshold and it's almost now double, going on triple what we set. Real estate tax is going to be handled, uh, not in a raise but in a reassessment. So the value increases, so that's where people will pay more because their property's more. So I still go back to we don't need to raise this very much. I'm, we can raise it some, but I'm, again, I'm not going to vote for any more than two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five?
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to vote for three twelve, so we can have, uh, discussion about that. But neither one of us has made a motion yet, so.
Well, I may get, I may get voted down, but I'm, I'm, I'm going to put the motion on the floor that, uh, we leave it as is, two, two dollars and four cents for this school, for this year, for this coming year.
Let me ask another question because, um, Dr. Westbrook brought up a, um, a question and I think Don has explained this before, the land use tax, we still, we actually are a year away from that.
Yeah, you, you're not going to realize any loss in revenue until FY twenty-three.
Okay.
On that, it's not going to affect FY twenty-two revenue.
And that's what, two hundred thousand, I think?
It's a hundred ninety-one thousand.
Yeah.
And that will be on the June agenda, am I correct?
It will be on the June agenda along with three other public hearings.
Okay, I put a motion on the floor that we adopted, two dollars and four cents. And, uh, it may get voted down, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three, all opposed, nay? Okay, okay, all right, surprise. All right. Next one is consideration of scheduling a public hearing at the June twenty-fourth meeting. Who, that's, uh, Mr. Barnes?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what I'm handing out now are some pictures related to the notice of violation that was in the packet, preparing for all this last week. Do not have time to give you all some of this. And also, if you look in this little packet in the back, you have copies of the original uh, special exception and conditional use permit for some of the land where the offending debris fires, trash fires affected parts of Whitestone Williams and even Kilmarneck last week.
I forgot where that was.
As y'all see in, in the memo, um, we, we received calls early last week on Monday and the sheriff's department did as well through nine-one-one and through walk-ins, complaints of people having, uh, upper respiratory distress, fog. Uh, some folks didn't realize that it was even smoke, they thought it was fog and couldn't see in certain areas of, of roadways in the county, especially in the lower county. Uh, we pretty quickly found out where it was because, uh, actually some spotter pilots flying into Hummel Field. That is right on the FAA approach to Hummel Field and they sent some of the photos that you see there. Uh, we knew that the site, as you know, uh, in- We knew that the site, as you know, in May of 2019, county staff sent this site a notice of violation for illegal solid waste dumping and asked them to immediately begin cleaning it up. To date, that has not occurred. Part of the issue, and I'll just go ahead and say this publicly, is the Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy did nothing to abate or to withhold the sand mining permits that this site has. And I think that created an attractive nuisance. Why are you gonna clean up when your revenue stream and sand is a valuable resource, and sand is hauled away from this site dailies? Sometimes seven days a week, according to the neighbors who I've talked to and what I've witnessed myself. So, that being said, DMME knew that this trash was still there, and at some point did, and I have an email to prove it, did indicate to these individuals that they needed to burn the debris to get it out of the way. That debris is full of shingles, tires, plastic insulation.
Refrigerator.
Refrigerators, broken up buildings, sadly. So, this, this smoke was pretty bad situation. As the week progressed and, and these fires were relit every night, county staff even went down there, not me, but Bill Farrell, thank you, Bill, went down and passed by that place almost nightly at 8, 9 o'clock, renewed smoke could be seen coming up, so we knew they were lighting it nightly. The emergency services chief, in coordination with state fire marshal's office and others, decided that it was pretty much an immediate threat to human health and indicated, got permission from one of the property owners to go in there and put the fire out. Fire was hot enough, it required upwards of around 30,000 gallons of water. Don't quote me on that, but it was numerous, numerous tankers to put the fire out. That being said, this note of notice of violation is county staff asserting that I think the conditions of this 1993 special exception and 1991 conditional use permit have been violated. Now, if you look at these two documents, and I'll start in chronological order, going back with 1991 real quick so we can get out of here. The 1991 conditional use permit asked for a junkyard only for inert demolition debris, concrete, bricks, and mortar. And reading back through, and I have a file, it's sitting over there, it's about five or six inches thick. I don't need to give you all of that, but I have read through all of it in the last two years. The intent by Theodore Fisher &amp; Sons at that time was to have a place where they could store this for recycling. Even the county had done some demolition of some buildings. They were doing a really careful job. I even talked to somebody today in person who had worked on that project of separating real clean block, concrete, but that did require conditional use permit at that time. Obviously, what is going on there now does not fit the definition of this conditional use permit. In 1993, they asked for a special exception, because the county had moved to a special exception process at that time. On the same parcel, 34-7 here, to operate a stump and brush, scrap, or chipping facility, you can clearly see on there, wood burning has been crossed out. And the planning director at that time did send them a letter saying that, and there were some correspondence that went back and forth before the public hearing, that burning was not to take place there. Some of the other conditions were so strict as to say they didn't even want oil to be changed there, they didn't want vehicles parked there, and other things. Obviously, the dumping of boats and tires and other things are, are an extreme example of this being violated. Now, a couple things that, that do, undertaking this process, staff felt that it was necessary to, to, to have you guys direct us to undertake revoking these two items. I feel personally that a special exception becomes a quasi-right. It goes with your property, but it adds value to your property, but it is a contract with the county. If you violate it, there should be a method by which the county would revoke special exception. And I know that not everybody's in favor of our utility scale of solar ordinance, but I think it should be pointed out that as we go into that process starting in July, I think it's important for the public to see that this county takes land management seriously, and that we also take seriously, and county staff take seriously, special exceptions, and, and we are willing to revoke a special exception, or propose to revoke a special exception if, if the terms are violated. So, and as you know, I've, I've been beat up a little bit over that on another special exception site, but, but we do take special exceptions seriously. Even if they're over 20 years old, it still stands. And I think, I think part of the problem here is that you have four property owners. One is causing most of the problems for the others. And I've used the word attractive nuisance already, but I'll use it again. Having these two have anything to do with any kind of debris at all associated with these parcels does kind of further that attractive nuisance for the continued problem of dumping and now burning that dumping debris. So, it may be time to undertake that. The bad thing is, and Mr. Cornwell and I talked about this earlier, it must be pointed out that, a couple things this will not do. Sadly, where the fire actually occurred was on two associated parcels that are within the town of Irvington, we believe. There's, the site's not been surveyed under current conditions, so we're not exactly sure where those property lines are. But it appears, using GIS and aerial photos, that the fire actually occurred, not on the parcel where the conditional use permit is. But this is something that we can propose now. I will provide notice to the family if you decide to undertake this route. They, they are aware of this. Almost all of them have sent back the notice that they are in receipt of that notice of violation, letting them know that county staff were gonna make this move to do this. This also will not clean up the site. The, the notice of violation order to clean up the site still stands, but revoking this CUP and SE does not get the site cleaned up. That's something that staff have to continue to work on, and we will, because I think that this site has gotten to a point where it's just out of control, and it's becoming, when it becomes a public health problem, I think it's, it's far beyond time to have done something about it. And I stand by, ready for your questions or comments.
I can, I have a couple comments. Number one, interestingly enough, first place, I don't know that T.P. Fisher &amp; Sons Incorporated still exists. I tried to do a state corporation commission, search on it, and found nothing. And they were technically the owner of the property. Not the, the individuals, they may be shareholders, I don't know, but technically it was a name of corporation. It may be in receivership, it may have passed over to these people as receivers, I don't know that. But regardless, we're giving notice to them to be safe, in case they have a property ownership. What this, neither this special exception or this conditional use permit did was to allow mining. It did not allow, and you can read them, it doesn't say a thing about mining for sand on site. We've gotta figure out how that happened. And it may be that the mining occurred before we adopted zoning. Or it also may be that the mining is occurring on property in the town of Irvington, and not on this piece of property that we are concerned with here. We don't know that. So, we're not, as of right now, we're not preventing the mining of the sand from these sites, if in fact that is legal, and we're not sure it is. In order to revoke a conditional use permit or a special exception, you have to go through the same process you did when you granted it. That is, notice to the property owners and a public hearing. And so, what we're asking you to do is to schedule a public hearing for the June meeting while we flesh out the other issues relating to this property.
Okay.
It's my understanding that there's some question of the address of the property. Now, this is unofficial rumor control, but it's possible that the address given is actually that residence next to the school board office, and not this sand pit. So, I, that's another thing to add to your list, if I'm incorrect.
Well, it's got a map number, 34-7.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. So... But when a notice of violation is mailed, it's not mailed to a map ID, is it?
No, it's mailed to the property owner at his address.
Yeah.
And we usually use, we use the tax information for the property owner's address.
Well, what I don't understand is how we can have an order to clean it up, and we have no ability to enforce that.
Oh, we do.
Yeah.
Well, we haven't.
We haven't, but we do.
We enforce the other one.
Yeah, eventually we did. After some time, we had all that wood behind this house. Yeah.
The court finally ordered that, didn't they? It was court ordered, yeah.
After, yeah.
I'm in fully favor of this. We need to hold our zoning strictly and, and, and held, held people accountable. We've had problems with this, and we've been addressing this incrementally. Hopefully, with our new zoning administrator, we'll continue this enforcement in a judicious way. So, I'm in favor of moving forward with this public hearing.
So, you made a motion today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we schedule a public hearing to consider revocation of prior approved conditional use and special exception permits on tax map number 34-7.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, as have it. Okay. Next one is board reports. All right, board reports.
I have an appointment.
Okay.
For the historical committee. Ms. Sandra Smiley said she would serve for three more years.
Okay. All right, you've heard the motion that Sandra Smires served for three more years on Historic Resource Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, as have it, okay. Any other board reports? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Chairman, I move that the board reappoint Ms. Edna Revere for another term on the Wetlands Board.
All right, you've heard the motion that Ms. Edna Revere be reappointed for another term on the Wetlands Board. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, okay, as have it. Further board reports?
Um, excuse me.
I just have a report, you know.
I, I don't know that I've done this already, because this is my bad night. But I would like to reappoint Tom Richardson to the...
You've already done it, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would, would like to bring the board up to speed on, on what we've been doing for public access. And I don't think I reported this last month, that Mr. Lawson, Mr. Barnes, and one of the citizens, and myself visited some sites on Upper End of the County, two sites in Pacific. But the one site that we wanna put emphasis on is at Thomas Landing, which is property that's already owned by the county. And what I'd like to get the board's support on is having the county staff go ahead and move forward with turning that, that dock into a nice fishing pier down there, doing the necessary repairs, adding an L on to the end of it. And Mr. Lawson did some research on it, and we own three other properties right, right there in that same percentage area, so, so it's a lot of potential there. So, I would like, you know, get the board's support on, on, on the county staff going ahead and looking into that, and, and see if we can get, get something, get something done.
Mr. Colley, if you'd like, Mr. Rowe is prepared to put those parcels up and show them the tax map.
Okay.
Mr. Rowe, you wanna put that up there? I think a lot of times, we don't realize what land we own in the county.
It's these, there are four parcels right here. This one right here is the one on which we now have the dock and the boat ramp. There's an adjoining property also owned by the county, where if, when the dock comes out like this, you put an L on it for the fishing pier. Would bring it out far enough where you could get some good fishing. There's people already fish down there. And then additionally, we have two more properties up there, 1976A and 1976B, owned by the county, which is where we have the parking lot and also a smart hole up there. So, there's a potential, when you look at this, three acres, that we already own, no expenditure involved there. The dock is already in, there is, I think it probably needs some, you know, renovation. And the boat ramps there, for a minimal expenditure, we can turn this into a really nice facility.
Yeah. So, with the, with the board's support, I mean, if there's consensus that we go ahead and do that, okay, it's common consent. The other thing, it just, we, we still preliminary, we talking with Mr. Bellis today, we, we got, or yesterday, I guess I should say, got, you know, wanna look at some, a piece of property in, in Whitestone that we might can, can do something with for his fishing and things like that, and making it kind of attractive coming into, coming into the county. So, we gonna, we gonna take a visit to that site next week and kind of look around and get some ideas and things like that. So, just like Mr. Lawson stated earlier in the meeting, we are closer now to, to doing some things on the water than we've been in a long time.
Oh, my Lord, yes. My Lord, yes.
I call the question.
All right. Okay. So, did you put a motion on the floor?
I didn't put it, I said, it's just common consent. But y'all don't like that common consent. The motion would be that we ask the county staff to go ahead and look into Thomas Landing and to develop that site into a fishing pier.
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, no, okay, as have it. I like to make this comment. I feel happy. I mean, I don't know if y'all know, you can feel my happiness. For years, we've talked about this, well, I've talked about this, and I got burned out. We had a lot of lip service on this board, but the present board, you make me happy. You, you doing something, you, you know, it's just not lip service, you're actually doing something for, for the public in this area, and I'm glad to be part of this. All right, thank you.
Sometimes government's slow, but we're getting it done. Chairman, I've been to a board supervisor's meeting for a long time. Having listened to you all, I don't need to, I can speak without it.
Yeah, but it's, it's being booed, so there's a quality to hearing.
I'm Jim Breeden. I haven't been to a board supervisor's meeting for a long time, but I can tell you, having been listening to you all, I feel like I could sleep well tonight. This county's been well-run. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Any further board comments? If not, if not, county administrator?
Mr. Chairman, I just elaborate on a couple of things. Right now, for your June meeting, we'll have five public hearings. That doesn't include whatever Brian may have. So, two of those public hearings will be related to the cigarette tax. We've had, it's Lancaster, Westmoreland, the town of Montross, and now Middlesex and Urbana are joining in. But the first three are holding their public hearings in June. Middlesex and Urbana are holding public hearings the 1st of July. And so, the state has recommended, instead of splitting it up, you know, three being effective July 1, and two being effective August 1, since they're all right there close together, if we couldn't all make the effective date August 1. So, that's, that's, will be the proposal.
Has the, has the agreement changed?
Yes, the agreement, and Jerry sent me the, the most recent version of that.
I was asked that by the Middlesex County Attorney, wasn't aware of it.
Okay. It, the one that the board approved in March was the Northern Neck Regional Cigarette Tax Board. But because now we have some Middle Peninsula Counties and other jurisdictions joining in, the name has changed to the Chesapeake Bay Region.
Well, the RAL changes, though.
Not that I'm aware of, it's just the name of it. So, and I'll bring that back for you all to approve, the revised version as well. So, two public hearings in June are related to the cigarette tax to be effective August 1. You also have a public hearing on a proposed revenue sharing ordinance related to the solar. I'm gonna have the amended amendment to the land use taxation ordinance to include forest land, which you have to adopt by June 30th of this year, and you just scheduled a public hearing to consider revocation of those prior approved permits. The CARES Act money, you've got a balance of right at $585,000 from last year's CARES projects. We've heard that the, the APB and Dominion proposal is gonna have a bill of $575,000. I have not been able to find out when that money needs to be paid, and if it will be in maybe two installments. I know the other counties who joined in originally split their contribution into two, so I'm wondering if maybe we'll have two installments instead of paying everything at once. I actually would prefer two installments, but, and also, under the American Rescue Plan, the new CARES money... the new CARES money, more information is coming down the pike on that. I've participated in a couple of webinars. The county's looking at 2,57,000, but whenever that comes, it's going to be split equally. The first part will come in this, this year, and the second equal amount will come one year after that.
Don, have we requested that money?
Uh, no, because we, we haven't, it hasn't been sent to us by the, the...
Do I understand that we have to request it or something like that?
We do, but they have to send the form with the certification forms like we did for the CARES money. I haven't gotten that yet. So, I expect that to happen probably within the next 30 days, so, but, but we have to request it, but all of the proper forms and all have not been, been sent out.
Slow government, slow government again.
Yeah. And the final thing, this really probably should have come under old business. At a previous meeting, I can't remember if it was last month or the month before, Dr. Westbrook made a motion, and you all approved, to have Jerry Davis come and explain exactly what the PDC does for the contribution that the counties give the, the PDC, and I've talked to Jerry about that, and he's requested to come to the August meeting. Things are busy for him right now with the cigarette tax and, and all, so he's, he's, and he's got it on his calendar for your August meeting, so he'll, he'll be here then to present on that. So, I think that's everything I had for you right now, so.
Would you ask him to bring his current income statement that shows what they have, often be termed equity or reserve, if you will?
Okay.
Monies that can be spent by them?
Okay, gentlemen, anything else?
I hate to give this up.
Move for adjournment.
Okay. All right, you heard the motion to move for adjournment. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, adjourned.